Mr. Long, you're good to go whenever you're ready.
Did you turn off the waiting room?
I most certainly did. Yes, you're all set. Yes.
Okay, my name is someone people in it. Good evening, everybody. It's the March 28th, 2022 Citrus School Committee meeting to order. This meeting will be held remotely and will be recorded posted. The recording will be available following the meeting. A public comment will be available later tonight through Zoom. Community members can also email me at mlong@cit.org with any questions. The Citrus School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during our meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is a disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate to commit to these standards. To the standard to support and respect our community. So this time I will call through a roll call vote to start our meeting. Long, yes, Ms. Limblon?
Yes.
Mr. Grindelini?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
And Dr. Burkowski?
Yes.
Thank you. So the first item on our agenda tonight is celebrating student student learning with Leicester Gate School. So I'll turn it over to Principal Beatty.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. I have two co-presenters with me tonight, Von Scopoletti, the sixth through 12 ELA Department Chair, as well as Liz Grindel, who is the sixth through 12 Math Department Chair. Tonight, we are going, it's always challenging to pick the one thing we want to celebrate because we have so much to celebrate when it comes to student learning at Gates. But tonight, we are going to celebrate our literacy and Title One program and the students and staff within it. We have a presentation for you to kind of give you an overview of the program to provide some information about how our students are doing and just take a look into the program itself. So I will share my screen. And is everyone able to see that?
Yes.
Terrific. So I want to, before we jump in, just talk about some of the adults that are involved in this program. Because programs don't change children's lives. It's adults and teachers who do. So the four specialists that we're focusing on their work tonight are Sarah DiMatio, Laura Messner, Kyle McCarthy, and Christina Shelley, and they support our literacy and Title One program at Gates Middle School. I'm going to turn it over to Von Scopoletti at this point to kind of walk us through what tonight will look like. So John, take it away.
Hi, friends. I hope you're doing great. And in a moment, I'll introduce Liz Grindel, our Math Department Chair, who's going to be talking a bit tonight as well. But as you can see, there, the goal of this presentation, there are a few of them, but the big picture is we just want to provide some updates on our Title One and literacy program at Gates. We have some specific guiding questions there that we'll be able to talk about. Some of you will recall that I shared a presentation with you around this time last year. And so I just want to go ahead and give some of the updates for that, talk about what the program is, how it's expanded, what's new. And also to dive into some of the data that we've already been able to collect. So looking forward to sharing that with you. Excuse me. So having said that, let me just go ahead and remind you, and Ryan, if you could just advance to the next slide. Who we use? Thank you. In terms of what the program is, I think it's best to understand that in terms of who we support and what those supports are. In terms of who we support, we support students who struggle with reading, writing for ELA, and then problem solving, number sense, and/or algebraic thinking for math. And these are students who are struggle but don't receive supports in other areas. Right? So that's really the intended focus for the program. As far as what the supports are, there's a range of those. For those of you that are watching along with us, you could see that there are co-taught classrooms, both in math and ELA. And there are in-class opportunities for either individualized instruction or small class or small group instruction. And then there was also this year, for the first time, some dedicated enrichment blocks, which we'll talk a little bit more later on in the presentation. Next slide, please.
So hi, I'm Liz Grindel. I know many of you. I think you know my face, too. I wanted to share what's expanded in the school year. So as you can see, what we have in our expanded for 2122 is for all students, we have more co-taught classes. And this is as a result of the increase of having three 3.0 full-time FTEs to 4.0. So meaning that all four of our educators who are literacy specialists now, they're all full-time teachers. And that was an absolute huge asset that we're so thankful for because now we can have more co-taught classes to help facilitate the literacy skills for instruction. We've also worked into a functional referral source for our response to intervene intervention. And that continues to provide input on the interventions for struggling students and also a resource for teachers who want more literacy instruction in their classes. Ryan, will you go to the next slide?
Yes, this is the next.
Thank you. So, okay, what's new? So here is some really exciting pieces that we're happy to share. Again, benefits for all staff and students in our Title One program. We've established a Gates Literacy Council with John and myself. We chair that. We meet monthly and we use it to streamline and provide accountability for the actual program. So again, like Mr. Beatty said, programs do not change lives. People do. But because we work with all the literacy specialists on this council, we really feel like it's a huge asset and dedicated time for them to talk about strengths and challenges and ways that we can support them to continue to make the program better. We're really happy about a designated enrichment block where these content literacy specialists work with some of our tier three students specifically on their needs. And also, which is new this year, we're using data to drive our placement process. And it truly prioritizes diagnostic and growth scores. And lastly, as we made our recommendations for the program, we used a tiered support for the students based on their needs, and we've continued to use that this year. Already using feedback that we received to help enhance the program for next year, too. So we wanted to show you a few of the tiers in action. This is a tier one. This is literally a classroom where there's two adults in the room. You can't see the other adult, but he's over on the other side of the room, supporting some other students. And they're provided within a co-taught classroom. Students, all students are appreciative of this. We have some quotes towards the end about what kids are saying, but it's an opportunity to provide them within a classroom and whether that's the individualized support or it's a separated classroom where, you know, half the students go one way and the other half the other way. We're really happy about the opportunity for more co-taught classes.
And again, for tier two, as we mentioned earlier, this has to do with the small groups. So this would be during, say, for example, here, like in English class, the literacy specialists are able to pull certain students out during the co-taught class time to do everything from monitoring the work production, right, work completion, but also to do some more specific interventions, right? Maybe it is to simply reteach what was just taught to the class in general. And again, this is one of the huge benefits of having a space like Gates, where there are so many open spaces and there are so many places where teachers can go to work with small groups of students. And sometimes these small groups are homogeneously grouped, right? In other words, maybe it is students who have been identified or specifically for tier two interventions. But at the same time, sometimes there are peer models that will be working in there as well. So that's just one of the things to keep in mind with the flexibility that we have at Gates for that. And then for our next slide, we can see there, this is an example of the enrichment block where it's a very, very small group of students. And this is intensive and additional time during the enrichment blocks with literacy content specialists. So this would happen on Tuesday or Thursday during what's sometimes referred to as H block. And it really is just that opportunity, just to kind of pause from that, that just continually moving forward with the with the curriculum that's happening in the in the co-taught classroom. Opportunity just to really pause, get that additional reinforcement. This can, this usually follows the plan of a mini lesson in a lot of ways, right? A quick little activator and then just identifying what everyone's going to be working on for that. So for English, for example, that could be something related to grammar, right? Just some some review that's needed for that. So there's a wide range that we can do there with the tier three enrichment. And again, this is something that we were able to do for the first time this year, partly due to the increase in full-time equivalency, right, from three to four, but also due to a lot of the work with the schedule that that both Mr. Beatty and Ms. Lesniak have been very helpful with. And I'll turn it back over to Liz for some data.
That's better. I'm unmuted. So we're excited to share, really for the first time, some data that we've been able to gather for students, for all students. So you can notice here, this is for all students, and we've had the opportunity to implement IXL for students. And again, we recognize that there are a lot of ways to measure growth at the elementary schools and lots of opportunities. And we haven't had that opportunity other than potentially an MCAS score, which again, we are, we can use, we can use growth scores. That wasn't a huge opportunity for us to use over the past few years. So we've been able to use both the diagnostic level and the average growth for students, for all our students. And just to do a little explaining with IXL, a good example would be the diagnostic level, the leading number is meant to be the actual grade level, and it goes from 600 to 699. So our students in sixth grade have an average diagnostic level of 642 in math. And what we can see there is that they've grown 102, and that's your average growth. These are the scores as of just the end of February. So just as a note there, what that's telling us for all of our students, they've had a growth, meaning they started off their school year at around like a 540. So they've made some great growth. We've also seen growth across all the other grades with this, again, not some of the biggest growth. But we're really excited about that. And I will say, in crunching some more of the numbers, we realize that our grade six students are using it the most, which also, as we think about like the practicing and over redoing work and making sure that they're getting where they are. We also are recognizing that it makes, would make sense that our sixth graders are seeing the most growth. So that's just a little bit about those scores for all of our students. And then on our next slide, we have, these are the students who receive any type of literacy support. So we're able to share that. And again, we recognize and we again are able to look and see like, wow, at our sixth grade level, that's where our students are spending the most time working on it as part of maybe part of the classroom, maybe part of their homework, but really digging into practicing and going through and making sure it's meeting their skill level where they are. We have been working on this as a school for the first time. And then again, using it as our growth and diagnostic tool for our literacy program as well. You know, I don't want to discount that we do have a negative number there for our growth in grade eight. I will say, and not to explain it away, but similar to a very small end value on an MCAS score, we wouldn't actually traditionally include that number. So I just want to kind of put that out there and also recognizing that as we create our schedule, we did put a lot of our resources into our sixth grade. So the other piece around that is it also helps us to see like, what are this, what are the challenges that isn't helping us to make some growth there with that cohort, those cohorts of students? So it's good feedback and helps us grow a little bit as well, too.
And I can speak a little bit to this on this slide here, right? You know, so the data is important, but the so what is arguably even more important, right? So when we're talking about all students, on average, we're looking that all students on average are within or above their grade level achievement expectations according to IXL. All right. And I think that's an important thing to recognize. Students receiving literacy supports on average are slightly below grade level as of right now. But they are demonstrating growth. And then for students who receive tier three supports, those are students who sometimes have the greatest needs and literacy specialists continue to just do a great job of intervening during those enrichment blocks and just determining and then implementing the remediation that seems to be the best fit so that we can, excuse me, continue to support growth and achievement there. And if I can, just to forgive me, Dr. Burkowski, I may anticipate a question that you will have, which is, so what does excellence look like in a literacy program? And forgive me if I'm assuming there, but I've been to plenty of plenty of the school committee meetings. And I think, you know, we spoke about this, Mr. Beatty, Ms. Grindel and I, and really, how we would define that is an excellent, you know, a truly excellent literacy Title One program would be one where all students are above grade level achievement, right? I mean, that's that, that would be the ultimate goal to get to for that. Now, again, having said that, we are just implementing this for the first time, getting, getting as we work towards getting there. So a very good program would be one that gets students who receive supports to grade level, right? So just a couple of different benchmarks to be very clear about for that. And you know, but again, we start where kids are and we work to get them where ideally we would like them to be. All right. So that's a lot of stuff from both Liz and I, and I'm happy to turn it, or we're both happy to turn it over to Mr. Beatty now. Some testimonials from students, some pictures of kids in action. And so, Mr. Beatty, we turn it over to you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Scopoletti and Ms. Grindel. Appreciate you sharing the data because the data helps us stay on track, helps us to monitor our progress. And as you both said, I think one of the great things about this year in terms of the additional support in staffing that we received, as well as the implementation of this program, helps us to have kind of more concretes of how is this working? We know that that's a piece of the puzzle. The other piece and the most important piece is how students are experiencing it. So we collected some testimonials just from students. We have 128 students who benefit from literacy support at Gates Middle School, which is 20% of our school receives targeted support in literacy and math. And this is what some of our students had to say. So one student said, it helps me a lot because one teacher can be helping another student while the other student is helping me, I'm sorry, the other teacher is helping me unlike a class with one teacher. Another student said, the co-teacher really helps me to better understand what we're doing if I get lost or if I don't understand fully. Students like having co-taught classes. They like the two adults because two adults is always better than one. Extra accountability, but also extra support. One student says, I got more things and I got my questions and things done much faster and got my work done. One teacher or one student provided some feedback that he believes the specialists are doing a great job of what they're doing now. And finally, last student said, I've had an easier time in class because I understand things more. Sorry, there's one more. Students to his literacy teachers and I don't want to, you have helped me a lot this year, not only on work, but because you've motivated me. When I get stuck on any piece of work, I say, I can't, or this is too hard, and you always remind me that I can do anything that I want. When we're talking about 120 students, 128 students that receive literacy support, we recognize that middle school is a time to build skills and to get better at everything. But we also realize that middle school is a time when students develop their mindset towards hard things. And a lot of the students in the program need that extra boost of confidence. They need that extra support. They need that extra set of eyes on them. And as the data shows, as well as the testimonials, we're really proud of their work as well as the work of all of their teachers and John and Liz as well for their leadership of this program. And we are just very lucky to have this this year and in the future. So we thank you for your attendance tonight. We came up with a list of anticipated questions, but just we won't put those up. We'll pick your questions as it is. And I'll stop sharing. And any questions that you have for me, John or Liz would be happy to answer.
And thank you for putting this together. This is one of those things where we often hear from a budget perspective, we need specialists or we need something in our schools to do something, but we don't always see the the results of that, to be able to put that on the screen and actually show that is very helpful. So thank you for putting that presentation together tonight. Are there any questions from the committee?
I would just say, Mr. Scopoletti, thank you for that definition of excellence. That was, that was great. Along, and I want to say, I really love, Mr. Beatty, that you included the quotes because I think it's so nice to have that qualitative data because it's, it's one thing to talk about test scores. But then when you're showing motivation, grit, overcoming failure, we know all of those things are also critical to the excellence that we're trying to achieve. So really nice rounding out of the the mixed method there. I was curious, Liz, when you mentioned, sorry, Ms. Grindel, when you mentioned when we were talking about the literacy council and accountability and improvement, can, can someone just speak to maybe an example of, so when you look at those IXL scores and you see something that's a smaller magnitude than you expected or that negative score, like, how, what does it look like when you say that that council, you know, promotes accountability and improvement? Can you give us just a small example sort of what what that means? Just make it more tangible for us?
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. So we didn't give you like super micro data, but one of the benefits, and I know this is a great question because I will tell you, the math teachers have been using IXL for a few years by choice. And again, it wasn't a district-supported piece until last year. So we got our first professional development from IXL early on. But our literacy specialists have been doing a phenomenal job. IXL does a good job of skills and their standards base. So when we see either, and not overall, but dip or growth in a skill for a kid because they're working with those kids in targeted instruction, like, and I, one of our literacy council specials who didn't feel so comfortable digging into the data was like, all right, here's what I did with here's what I did with my data to figure out, okay, I want to work on reading and I know we're doing this class and I see on IXL, how do I meld the two together? Because I think that was a big piece. That was a shift because in the ELA version of IXL, it's not as easily targeted as it is. I don't want to say it's easy to do in math, but we can pick a standard, match it right up with the math standard and say, this kid can't multiply a two-digit number or round to three decimals. Oh, wait, what are they doing on IXL? And then meld those together. So I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, it is. Thank you very much.
Mike, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Beatty, you answered one of them. The total number of kids who are benefiting by this is 120. I guess one of my questions is, how and when are these students identified? Are they generally coming in from elementary school as tier one, tier two, tier three students? Or are we identifying them in sixth grade and then applying these specialists to those folks?
Sure. So what we do is we kind of do a ranking system where we collect data from the previous year. And so in this case, we would collect IXL data at the elementary school. We would collect Eureka data for all students. And then other sources of data like MCAS scores or teacher recommendations or very concrete skills that kids need work on according to their teachers. And we'd assign a number to each category and we'd say, you get one point if you score between these. You get three points if you score between these. And then that way, we have a whole list and it boils down to kind of a number next to each student's name. And so we then look to see what do we have available for staffing to determine we want this many sixth graders in our literacy program. But it's based on the data, which is nice because without these progress monitoring tools or without the use of data, it turns into, you know, I want my child in this. Or a teacher might say, I believe this child needs extra support, but the extra support might not be the targeted literacy support. They might need different types of support. So we have tried really hard to use the data to say, this is the type of support students need and this is the type of support we can provide. So it's also a fluid piece because we, you know, occasionally have students throughout the year who all of a sudden, you know, aren't making progress. And one of the things we need to do is we need to say, what's the reason why they're not making progress? And through that RTI process, we're able to say, all right, I wonder if some literacy intervention would make an impact on their achievement or their growth. So it's been nice to kind of be fluid. You're not just signed up. And it's, you're here for the year. We've had students move in and move out this year because we've seen growth in not only their IXL, but how that translated into the classroom as well as kind of their independence.
Right. And I'm just, I'm just curious, on the co-teaching model, do the, do the students stay with those? I guess is this co-teacher, the ELA co-teacher stays in the ELA classroom? And then the students just move from class to the classroom? So what, so they would have a co-teacher in their math class? If they qualify for both, they would have a co-teacher in their math classroom as well as a co-teacher in the ELA classroom?
Correct, yes.
Also to add, Peter, I want, or Mr. Gates, sorry. Mr. Beatty and Ms. Lesniak did a phenomenal job. When we identified students as tier three, those students were assigned to an enrichment block with the literacy specialist who is also their co-teacher. So then they build that relationship in the classroom and then the additional in really specific intervention. So it's a great opportunity. So that's a huge shift from what we've been able to do in the past. And that was the proactive approach that we decided would be best for kids, but it also I think made a huge impact for families as well because we reached out to all those families in August to let them know that here's what we have planned for you, your child, and moving forward. So in the past, when we had like a pullout or a push-in model, we had families who would want to opt out because it felt different and it doesn't feel different for kids. And we have no reports or any feedback from families asking to be taken out of the program. So that's a win because in the past, we have had that before.
And then finally, the transition, this might be a difficult question to answer, but if we still have these, all these kids remain tier one, tier two, tier three, is there a transition? Or are we, what's the transition look like to high school from eighth grade to ninth grade? Are there, maybe a question for Dr. Guire later point, but is that transition a topic to be reviewed or to be discussed?
I think one of the things we do with transitions are huge. So that transition from fifth to sixth grade or from eighth to ninth grade, we have a whole process in terms of how we share information. And I think this year, the fact that we have the data and we have different tiers, when we share that information with the high school, they're going to be able to use that for scheduling purposes. And just knowing that students receive support in the middle school and made growth, I think that's just going to make that transition planning on the administrative side of where to place kids and how to place kids a lot better.
Great. Thank you.
I have a question to Mr. Beatty. Just curious, I know, you know, the ranking system, the tiered kind of stuff is all, you know, common practice and and all that. You guys call RTI and we call it tat team, like, you know, different districts call them different things. Do, it just kind of sparked a question for me. Do you know, do different districts have different parameters of what qualifies kids for needing different tiered supports? Or is there any sort of standardized state level type thing? I don't know. I'm in MCAS mode right now. So I'm thinking about just then we rank them all as one Massachusetts group. So I'm just curious if we, if there are any kind of state level or comparable.
Think through the Title One grant, we are required to develop a ranking system where we include data and, you know, proficiency and standards. We though do get to select the data points we want to include. And that's why, you know, it's important that we don't just focus on one assessment because sometimes kids have an off day. So we, you know, like to include IXL, MCAS, teacher recommendations. And then for incoming sixth graders, how they're doing in Eureka math for this year, different data sources. So I don't believe there is for these programs, a strict, you know, Massachusetts-wide definition of who gets support or how to rank. But it's left up to local districts to kind of make that decision.
Okay, thanks. I was going to ask another question about one of the slides, but it might be annoying to go back to it. I'll try to do it without us having to share again. So when you're looking at the average diagnostic levels, I guess to see the number and then see plus 10 or plus 108 improvement, what is, where should they be? So if a sixth grader in ELA or math, whatever it is, is that, where should we expect them to? I see the growth, but what is the start? And then I see 600, say is the starting, but what is the kind of starting point for that? What, where should they be?
I'll speak to that grade level. So a student beginning seventh grade should, I'm using air quotes, should be at 700 because that's the beginning of the seventh grade standards. By the time they finish seventh grade, they should be at 799. So yeah, really good question. Again, IXL. Um, so yeah, really good question. Um, again, IXL uses their data and says like plus or minus five for those pieces. And I think the other piece around, um, the IXL data too, that's I think a win for a lot of our kids is that they can, even though skills are assigned by their teacher, that when they go into what we call the diagnostic arena, which gives us more, uh, uh, more usable immediate feedback on not specific skills, that's when kids get to go to skills beyond their grade level by choice or not. So a lot of times, um, parents might say like, wait, why does my child have a little extra? Like it said, do 20 minutes on the diagnostic in addition to, you know, over a course of a week. That's why we use that tool because it helps us, uh, it's prescriptive. It's really great for kids. And it's also, and again, it, it's not, those aren't about what IXL will call smart scores. Those are about, um, helping them move through grade level or beyond grade level. And also kids don't know what grade level. It's not punitive. So no kid is getting feedback sitting as a seventh grader going like, hey, way to go. You're 492. They do not get that. We do not allow it to be provided, um, to kids.
Yeah, I like how it's very individualized.
Well, thanks for letting us come and then celebrate our students' learning and our teachers', uh, teaching tonight. We appreciate it.
And thank you again for coming on today. This is a great presentation. Uh, next on the agenda, we have the student advisors report. So I'll turn it over to, uh, Ms. Reese and Mr. Kingsley.
Alrighty. Hi y'all. And thank you again for having us on. All right. To kick it off, sophomore students took ELA MCAS last week. I'm sure everyone did their best. I heard some chatter about it in the hallways and they all, I don't know, thought that they did well. And as has been happening for the past couple of weeks, AP mock exams are occurring in the Wednesday late starts. Students are gaining much necessary insight from these exams. Students who have chosen to be a part of the school to career internship program who have started their journeys in the internship world this past week as well. One friend of mine has started an internship at a local hospital, which she says she's loving so far. The freshman and sophomore student governments have their semi-formal dance this Friday at Pier 44 Community Building. I talked to a few students who said they had a great time. It was a full house there and lots of kids participated. Students are scaring to wrap up their scholarship applications all due Thursday. Thank you to the organization leaders from Situate who spend their time, effort, and of course, funding to support the collegiate pursuits of SHS students. John?
The DECA program will be hosting a ECHO Life Skills Competition at, at SHS for students in the region on Wednesday, April 27th. Um, our IXL students will prepare to present against students in similar programs on the South Shore. Uh, spring sports, uh, have started with, have started up with tryouts, um, held last Monday. A couple of teams, including girls and boys lacrosse and boys baseball have had scrimmages over the first week. And the ga, and games, uh, the first games will begin next week.
And I don't know if you froze or not, but.
Coming weeks. Oh, did I cut out?
I believe Johnny, Johnny, you did.
You cut out after scrimmages start this week.
Okay. Um, yep. So, so spring sports scrimmages, um, they, they, they had scrimmages last week and the games will start next week. Um, I know baseball, we have some scrimmages, uh, this Friday and Saturday. Um, and then a big shout out to winter sports teams who had great performances, um, this past season, uh, including both boys and basketball, uh, both, both boys basketball and boys hockey teams, um, who reached the final four in the state tournament and will host their end of season banquet in the upcoming weeks. Um, as we continue one of the best, uh, athletic season, athletic years in school history. And that's all for tonight. Um, I hope you heard most of that. Thank you.
We did. Um, are there any questions from the committee from our two student advisors? All right. Well, thank you both for coming and presenting tonight. That was, uh, great information. Uh, so next we have a presentation on the state of the school with, uh, Wampe Tuck Elementary School. So I'll turn it over to our principal, Reardon.
Good evening. I'm just going to share my screen. Can you see that?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, so good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Tracy Reardon, principal at Wampe Tuck. And I'm going to present the Wampe Tuck State of the Schools update tonight. So we are unique, um, in the Situate Public School System because we are the only pre-K to five school in our district. We currently have 78 students in our early childhood program and 353 K to five students attending Wampe Tuck. On this slide, I've included our school's mission statement. And you'll notice that our mission statement aligns with Superintendent Burkehead's two pillars of collaboration and excellence. And it states, I gotta move my thing here. Our mission at Wampe Tuck School is to work collaboratively with parents and the community to provide a high-quality, comprehensive, student-centered, learning-focused elementary school experience in a safe, nurturing and welcoming environment. We strive to develop lifelong learners who possess knowledge, problem-solving skills, and the intra and interpersonal qualities of character necessary for all individuals to reach their true potential within today's global society. Our goal every day is to be collaborative with all stakeholders and to grow our students into lifelong learners who possess the tools both academically and emotionally to be the best they can be. So these are the two pillars that we are focused on here in Situate. Wampe Tuck believes that Superintendent Burkehead's two pillars, collaboration and excellence, are the foundation for building a great school. When I was thinking about this presentation, I made a list of all the meetings that happened at Wampe Tuck. And I realized that every adult in our building is part of at least one collaborative group that meets on a consistent basis. And several of those groups include student input as well. I made a list of all the groups. I'm just going to name a few. So we do meet as a Wampe Tuck staff twice a month. But what's unique about that is even though it is a staff meeting, it doesn't include our entire staff. It includes all of our certified staff. So we, we also meet in smaller groups to make sure that every single person has a voice in, um, the education of our students at Wampe Tuck. We have grade level meetings every week. We have a social emotional development team that meets. Our PTO is a huge part of bringing our parents and the community into our building. We meet regularly with families and caregivers. We have an instructional leadership team that meets once a month. We have a love, inclusion and trust team that meets once a week. Our, our early childhood center meets regularly to discuss the, um, growth of our, um, youngest learners in our building. We have curriculum coordinators that meet with us. We have the office staff and our custodians that meet on a regular basis, a wellness committee. Our special education department meets monthly, our peer professionals meet monthly. And we have all of our Java likes, our school psychologists, our adjustment counselors, speech and language therapists, and occupational therapists. So we have quite a lot of collaboration that happens in our building. That collaboration within our Wampe Tuck community is what leads to the second pillar, excellence. We measure excellence in many ways, informal and formal academic assessments, social emotional surveys, student and staff surveys, teacher observations, participation in our school-sponsored events, concerts, art shows, just to name a few. We're always striving for every student to work to their full potential. In order to do that, we have to take on the mindset, and we do, that Wampe Tuck is not a one-size-fits-all school. We recognize and celebrate the difference among us and we tailor our instruction to the unique learning profiles of each one of our students. So for pillar one, I'm going to showcase a few collaborative highlights. Our grade levels meet every week. Um, those meetings are just chock full of information. And often it's hard to get everything in. We spend, um, three times a year when we do our, um, screeners, we always have a data meeting to go over that data. We use that data to create, um, targeted instruction for students, either through our win groups or in our tier one, tier two and tier three instruction. That weekly collaboration is also for curriculum alignment, making sure that grade levels are, um, following our scope and sequence of our curriculum. Um, it's also used to, to look at and adjust win groups. It's used to look at units and develop writing units and providing targeted instruction. And it's also used to talk about and discuss social emotional supports for students. Those groups, those grade level groups consist of the classroom teachers, literacy and math specialists, special education teachers, and often administration is in those meetings. The next collaboration group I want to talk about is our love, inclusion and trust team or our lit team. This is new, um, this year to Wampe Tuck and to our district. Um, this team is led by our first grade teacher, Trish Furman, our ELL teacher, Jen Johnson, and our school adjustment counselor, Paulette Marino, with the support and guidance of our DEI director, Jamil Adams. So initially, when we started this, um, group back in September and started talking about how to include student voice, we made a plan to have a representative from each one of our grades, grades three to five. So we put that information out to our classes and we got such a huge response. So much so that we decided we couldn't possibly only include one student per, per grades three to five. So instead what we did was we took the 65 students who volunteered to be part of this team. And they're all, they meet three times a year as a large group. And then every week on Mondays at eight in the morning, we have one rep from each grade, grades three to five. So when the large group meets, we use that time to brainstorm ideas um, and celebrations that are going to promote love, inclusion and trust in our district. And then when the small groups meet, the smaller group meets every Monday, that's a time we actually take those brainstorms ideas and we make action steps and we put them into place. So a couple of things we've worked on this year, um, we were part of the MLK celebration, which happened in January. We had a student speaker. We created posters with quotes from Martin Luther King. And it was our lit committee that worked on that. We recommended a, um, special lunch, um, for the cafeteria, which was served in March and it was Mexican skillet fajitas. We had 110 fajitas sold on that day. Um, it was a great success. Um, we had students from the lit team that, um, announced over our intercom in the morning with announcements. They gave a, um, a history of where Mexican skillet fajitas came from and how that meal was chosen. I also want to highlight our Wampe Tuck PTO. Um, this is an amazing group of, um, parents that volunteer their time to support our Wampe Tuck community. Um, so a few, just a handful of events that I, that I want to talk about, they support was our trunk or treat, which happened in October. This was a sold-out event, um, where families and students and staff, um, decorated the backs of their cars and, um, gave out treats and candy. Um, we also had, um, Mr. Munt, our music teacher, performing with students and singing. And we had our fifth grade ambassadors participate in that event as well. We also had our holiday fair in December, which again was a sold-out event. Um, it took, um, the whole Wampe Tuck community to pull this off, um, including students, staff, ambassadors, and, um, all of our PTO volunteers. The next group I want to highlight is our early childhood center. This is again, like I stated, unique to Wampe Tuck. We are, we are very fortunate to have our, our youngest learners in the district in our building. Um, this is a very tight group of professionals that work very closely together to support um, our three and four-year-old students who enter the schools for the first time. Um, they meet every week as a group to talk about student growth and achievement towards IEP goals and objectives. Um, they, like our grade level teams, they work on curriculum alignment. Um, they work on making developmentally appropriate, um, instruction in the classrooms for all our students. Um, they often, um, discuss, um, student, um, individual students and their growth and how to, um, best make sure that they're meeting their goals and objectives. Um, they work together to write reports, um, recommend IEP goals and objectives, and make accommodations and modifications within the classroom for those students. Um, one of the other things I want to highlight for the early childhood center is, um, an assessment tool that they use, which is called the Mullins Scale of Early Learning. Um, this is unique to, um, our birth to five-year-old students in that it is a collaborative effort and tool. So when a student comes in, when a student's referred to the ECC, the team works together to assess the child's strengths and weaknesses. Um, they evaluate the child together. They analyze the results together. They write the report. And if necessary, they draft the IEP. This process is a collaborative effort from start to finish. And finally, I just want to highlight some building-wide, um, collaboration that's happened this year in, at Wampe Tuck. We started the year by kicking off, um, our, this is our house, this is our house school assembly. Um, this was led by Jamil Adams and Daryl David. Um, they organized this event and they, um, came to Wampe Tuck and had a very high-spirited, awesome, um, celebration and kickoff to our year. Um, and that, we measured that success around, um, the amount of enthusiasm around the building, um, as we started the 2021, 2022 school year. Um, read for people in need. Um, this is led by our reading specialist, Carol Sousa, and our first grade teacher, Amy Green. This is a school-wide event where students collect pledges to read for one hour. The money collected is donated to the Patriot Ledger Lend a Ha, a Hand Foundation. This year we raised and donated $1,790. The next event happens every year in February. This is called Let Me Call You Sweetheart. This was actually started in 1997 by Principal Donovan. Students create and write Valentines for the community organizations. And I believe many of you on this call have been the recipient of those Valentines. This really is, it's so well-organized and well-run. Um, it really just takes the office, um, myself and my two, um, assistants, Peggy and Michelle. We send out the flyer and the teachers just know what to do. It's been done so long. What's, what's interesting here is we begin receiving calls and emails from community organizations before, um, Valentine's Day, asking if we're going to participate in this again, and if they can be expecting Valentines. Um, so it's definitely something that is, um, really, um, looked forward to. And then afterwards, we receive many thank you notes from the community members for Valentines. Uh, March Literacy Badness, this was, um, what we highlighted last year during our Wampe Tuck's, um, celebration of success. And we are actually in the, in the throes of it right now. We're in our last week. We have the final four books that, um, have been voted on and we'll have on Thursday, we will have our school-wide assembly with the terrific two with a, a live vote. And, um, we'll be crowning the, the winner on Thursday. This event is spearheaded and organized by Lynn Flannery, our literacy specialist, and Carol Sousa, our reading specialist, with the help of our instructional leadership team. And then finally, this year we are doing a Math Olympics. We haven't, um, done this yet. We, we plan to kick this off in June. Um, right now it is being organized by our instructional leadership team with our, um, math coordinator, Heather Allen. So, um, I, I, we haven't measured the success on that one yet because we haven't done it, but it's, it's looking to be a great event. So in pillar two, uh, culture of excellence, um, I'm going to highlight a few things here. And, um, in listening to, um, the Gates Celebration of Learning and, um, you know, one of the things Mr. BD said and wanted to address is how do we define excellence? And this is, um, this is such a great question. I've done a lot of thinking about this. Um, and one thing that always comes to my mind and, um, a message I have been, um, sharing with the Wampe Tuck staff is that we believe every student who leaves Wampe Tuck has the ability to master the K to five Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, including the, all the arts frameworks and the social emotional standards. And we want every child to be fully prepared to continue their educational journey in middle school. to be fully prepared to continue their educational journey in middle school. So excellence at Wampe Tuck is making sure that every single child leaves Wampe Tuck ready and prepared to enter middle school and be successful. So these are just three highlights of how we develop a culture of excellence at Wampe Tuck. The first one I want to talk about is the universal screener for number sense. This is a quick assessment that helps to identify skills and concepts that indicate readiness for grade level content acceleration, as well as identify students who would benefit from additional supports. The fall screeners are interview-based, meaning one-to-one with a student. The mid-year and spring screeners have both an interview component and a written task. And because this screener is done in a one-to-one interview, teachers are able to obtain a deep understanding of a student's math brain, along with the strategies and tools they use to solve the problems. So this one, I, I have firsthand experience with this. I have helped do these screeners last year with the math specialist and I've done it this year, both at the beginning of the year and at mid-year. And it really is fascinating how much information you can get from a student in just two to three minutes with four to five very targeted questions. And in this case, on this one, focused specifically on number sense. It really helps to support teachers in provided very explicit targeted instruction based on how you see kids think through and solve math problems. And again, specifically around number sense in this case. We measure success really from, from our data, right? We take, you know, we get our beginning of the year data and then we compare that to the middle of the year data. And then, of course, we'll have our end of the year data, which we will use to help support students starting in the, the next school year. The K to two foundations phonics program, this is new this year. I know you've heard a lot about this. It is, has been a great tool for supporting students in developing those foundational skills in phonics, but also creating consistent language amongst our K to two teachers, not only in Wampe Tuck, but also district-wide. This program provides tier one support to all students in the building blocks of reading and writing by connecting how words are encoded and decoded, so that students are first fluent with reading and writing syllables and then able to connect those into longer words. Students are given about thirty minutes of daily whole group and small group instruction. Progress is tracked through mid-unit and end-of-unit tests. Student needs to show eighty percent mastery of the skills before moving on to the next unit. So that, that's a little easier said than done. But there's just been great conversation amongst our K to two teachers, along with our literacy and reading specialists during our grade level meetings about what students that are meeting mastery and students who aren't meeting mastery. If a student is not at eighty percent on a given end-of-unit assessment, they're given more targeted instruction in that area and they're given a retest when ready. So for example, in looking at the data, in first grade, the, an end-of-unit two test was given on October fifteenth. There was one particular student who scored a seventy-two percent on those skills. The student was given more targeted instruction and a retest on November twenty-second, a little more than a month later, and they scored an eighty-eight percent on that test. So this, this program allows for very targeted instruction, very explicit way of collecting data and analyzing it, and then allowing you to move on to the next skills when students are ready. And then the last just program I want to highlight under a culture of excellence in pillar two is our fifth grade ambassadors. The ambassador program is led by Paulette Marino, our adjustment counselor. This is a voluntary leadership program for our fifth grade students. It is used to establish and foster responsibility, relationship with adults that are non-instructional in nature and a desire to give back to one's community. So ambassadors have the opportunity to perform jobs for adults throughout the Wampe Tuck community. We have many teachers that participate in this and it is voluntary on the teacher's part. Some of the jobs that happen around our building every week are helping Mr. Green, our phys ed teacher, set up and break down the equipment during classes, watering the plants with Mrs. Flannery, teaching sight words to first graders. They participate in PTO events. They plan and organize and hold a fundraiser every year for a cause that they choose. Last year, we held a car wash. All proceeds went to the Children's Hospital Pediatric Cancer Center. This year, they're planning a play and the money raised will be donated to a charity of their choosing. Right now, we have forty-eight out of fifty-five fifth graders that participate in the ambassador program. They also meet every week on Thursday before school. And during that time, they talk about the charity that they want to donate to. They, they are currently right now writing and planning the play they're going to perform. And they often debrief and talk about the jobs that they do throughout the building. This slide is going to just focus on personalization. The two areas I want to highlight under here are our wind blocks and our lunch bunches. Both of these focus on meeting the unique needs of our students. I'm going to start with win. The definition of win time is a focus on designing a system of learning that is specific to students with their needs in mind, and it stands for what I need, also known as a learner-centered approach. Win blocks are built into the master schedule at every grade level. Students are put into win groups based on data from a variety of data points. Dibbles, Star Symphony, the universal screener, which I talked about, which are administered three times a year. We also use end-of-the-unit foundations assessment. We use pre and post-unit assessments. At the beginning of the year, we do look at our MCAS data. And then we also progress monitor throughout our school year. When groups are set up for about six to eight weeks, those groups are very fluid. Students move in and out of them, very similar to what Mr. Beatty and his team just talked about in their celebration of learning. That time is used for very targeted instruction for students based on the data points and what they need. The win blocks are not just for students who need more support in specific curriculum, but also for students that are on grade level and students that are, that need acceleration. We have win blocks in math and ELA. We do believe that every child has the ability to thrive academically, but they need targeted individualized instruction to help them get there. And that's what we use our win blocks for. Right now, our math specialist is supporting forty-eight students during win time, not, not all at the same time. Our literacy specialist is supporting thirty-three students and our reading specialist is supporting twenty-eight students. Like I said, our groups are fluid. There is support at all levels. It takes a team, a collaborative team to pull off these win groups every day, even from admin. So I did a kindergarten win group in the fall and that was focused on phonics instruction. And currently, right now, I am doing a third grade math win group that is focusing on subtraction strategies. Another group I want to highlight for you that's very personalized is our lunch bunch groups. We give the HSA, the holistic student assessment survey to all of our fourth and fifth graders in the fall, in November. We use that data to develop groups of students who are needing extra support in a variety of social emotional skills. Those groups are sort of, or those students are divided amongst our school adjustment counselor and our school psychologist, and they create lunch bunch groups that focus on specific social emotional skills that students need. We also have teachers who participate in this, who create their own lunch groups, again, based on that data and helping to support specific needs in that area. So how are we getting to great at Wampe Tuck? One of the ways that I would love to see grow at Wampe Tuck is building more community partnerships. I'd love to see us collaborate with some of our community organizations to provide more to our school. For many years, we have partnered with North and South River Watershed Association. We'd love to expand that collaboration beyond grade five. We'd love to get more involved with the senior center and with the food pantry and the other community organizations within our situat community. We are at the elementary level in the process of implementing a consistent elementary reading curriculum. Currently, we have, we are piloting three literacy programs at Wampe Tuck and at each of the elementary schools that have been vetted by DESI. Teachers have volunteered to pilot one of these programs, are implementing one unit of the program assigned to them. When we're done, which is coming up pretty quickly here, we're going to be meeting district-wide with our curriculum coordinators to get feedback from our educators, so that we can determine the best fit for our district. This will be an excellent move forward in creating a consistent reading and writing or ELA experience for all of our elementary students pre-K to five. And then finally, we need to continue to strengthen our cultural proficiency. At our winter faculty meeting, Jamil Adams provided some PD with our staff about engaging in complex conversations. He introduced the MOO technique, My History, Our Lives, Our Future. This allows educators and staff to have a pathway to discuss whenever a complex topic arises. We were able to role-play and practice those conversations with each other as a staff as a way to get more comfortable with also doing this in our classrooms with our students. Working with the adults first, we hope that will assist us to expand our culturally proficient practices into the school environment with our students. We want to continue to develop a school environment in which students respect and affirm their own and others' differences. Wampe Tuck's going to further develop their ability to support students and engage them to share, explore and initiate dialogue about differences and similarities related to our background, our identity, our language, our strengths and challenges. We want to reach a place as a school community where conflicts become opportunities to listen, problem-solve and build relationships. And that's it.
Thank you, Principal Reardon, for having that presentation prepared and presenting it tonight. I'll do first, I'll turn over to the committee to see if they have any questions for you.
And I, I have a comment and then I have a question for Principal Reardon. Just my comment on the ambassador program, it's such a great program. And I think one thing, if I remember correctly, the students have to actually write an essay on, you know, why they think they should be an ambassador, which I think is a, you know, I, it must be so interesting to read these, you know, letters of, like an application process for the students, so. And I have a question about the lit team that it's, you said it's from grades three to five, and I can understand why maybe the younger grades, you know, aren't formally included. Is there like an informal way to include the, those younger kids?
Absolutely. And, and one of the things, again, because it's our first year, we were a little unsure, right, how it would go. And, and thinking about, you know, what we wanted to accomplish, Jamil has given us a lot of great guidance and thinking about how to go about this this year and the best way to include as many students as possible. So we started this year with grades three to five, but I, I absolutely see this expanding and to include the younger students as well. Like I said, we've had such a huge response from the students and wanting to participate. And those three times a year, when we have sixty-five kids come, I mean, our cafeteria is filled. We use the cafeteria on those days because so many kids come. And it's a great brainstorming event. It's a great collaborative effort on ways to spread love, inclusion and trust. So I see going forward, expanding that to our younger grades.
Great, thank you.
Principal Reardon, thank you so much for your presentation. I really enjoyed hearing your definition of excellence. And I'm curious, it, it sounds like you were really intentional in talking about continuing their journey versus of sort of pre-described or pre-prescribed journey, which I really, I, I thought that was great to sort of integrate that personalized nature of it. I had a question, if you could talk a little bit more about this piloting of reading curriculum. So perhaps, you know, sometimes as a parent, when you hear piloting reading curriculum, it makes you a little nervous because you're like, wait, what's, what's happening in my, my child's classroom? And so could you speak both to sort of what that looks like? And then you mentioned determining best fit for the district. So like, wha- what's going to go into that sort of notion of best fit? If you could just, I know it's a, I'm sure there's a lot of details, but maybe just give a brief explanation, that would be great.
Right. So the first step was to pick three programs. Well, that we, we ended up with three programs and we used the, the curate program on DESI, which is a curriculum assessment program that looks at curriculum and vets it, right, based on a set of standards. So looking at that, we, Megan Gregory and the principals, along with Assistant Superintendent Heidi Driscoll, identified three reading programs that fit, also looking at like kind of our mission statement in Situate and what we believe readers and writers need in order to grow to their best potential. So those three programs, then we put that out to all elementary teachers, asking for volunteers that would be willing to take one of the programs and one unit within the program and, and teach that. So we had, we actually had a much bigger response than we thought, just because it's, it's a, it's a lot of extra work. So you've got to ta- you've got to sort of quickly learn this, this unit and this program and think about how this is going to fit into what you're already teaching this time of year. But we had, we had a great response. So each building has so, a teacher in the building that is piloting one program, one unit from each program. And then we also tried to capitalize on the number of staff that are part of that. So for example, in kindergarten, the teacher who is doing that program, she also has a special educator who works in that room and the literacy, the reading specialist works in that room. So they are working together to implement it. So they're also seeing it. That is the same at each grade level. So at Wampe Tuck, we have a third grade teacher and then we have a K, a third and a fourth grade teacher implementing. So we're getting toward the end of those units right now. So teachers are starting to sort of wrap that up. And then our next step will be for the teachers to sort of collect their, their feedback and we'll meet district-wide. And those teachers who have piloted those units will have an opportunity to share their experiences. And then we'll be able, teachers who didn't pilot will have an opportunity to ask questions and gather more information. And then we'll work to make a decision on which one is going to best fit the students of Situate.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I have a few comments, not so much questions, Mike and Principal Reardon. I'm super impressed about sixty-five student volunteers also, as other school committees of members have noted in the lit program. That's so awesome. It's fantastic to see all those kids and families participating. And, you know, clearly shows the need for these types of programs and, and support. And also, I just noticed that since we saw last school committee meeting, the cushy, state of pushing presentation, I, I just want to note that it's nice to see sort of the common themes that are threaded throughout the elementary presentations because that consistency among buildings and that kind of common Situate experience that is something that school committee members and parents have been advocating for, for at least since I've been around, like, you know, five years, you know, from my knowledge and maybe probably more. Just to have that sort of common experience, no matter which of the four school elementary Just to have that sort of common experience, no matter which of the four school, elementary schools you attend. So I think it's nice to see those programs kind of individualized as well. I feel like you're doing an awesome job with making it also, you know, Wampe Tuck special, sort of, you know, I just feel like so far with the two that we've had, it seems like there's some common kind of baseline consistency, but also, you know, things that make Wampe Tuck unique and special and its own building and its own community seem to also be coming through. So just wanted you to know that that was something that came through for me in your presentation. And lastly, just, you know, thinking about curriculums and, you know, Carrie's question, sort of, doubled down on this thought that I had, just, you know, you look at Eureka math and in piloting programs and in general. And it's quite the kind of journey when you have the piloting process and then it just can take years to see the fruits of the labor of teachers and specialists and students. And, you know, it's interesting to see when we look at data and we're having these, you know, so many moving parts to all of this that, you know, even with my own kids, I see, you know, when we started using Eureka, one of my kids was in kindergarten, so he's going to get that flow of a fantastic math program all the way. Another child, you know, just by birth order jumps in in fourth grade and gets a new program when they started off in a different program and maybe one fits better for them. So I just think, again, kind of going back to that, every child's got this sort of unique experience that we're trying to really individualize for them, but also know that, you know, these are classrooms full of children and we're also trying to have common experiences with it at the same time together. So I think it's just, it's really great that we're able to kind of multitask like this with all these different parts that are moving around and, you know, see progress and see kids kind of, you know, reaching those kind of benchmarks that, and, and growing and progressing as they go on. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I, I just like two little notes here. All of our lit team, our lit team meets before school, so we meet at eight o'clock on Mondays. So just, you know, again, that also speaks to, you know, when sixty-five kids show up at eight o'clock, right, from meeting. That does speak a lot to the need, right, and the interest in having that. And we did that because we, again, we had such a huge interest in it and there's just no way to do that during the school day, right? You can't pull sixty-five kids to meet, so. So they, they come before school at eight and then that smaller group comes every single Monday before school. And then I just also want to speak to the, the common themes and the common experiences. I, I one hundred percent agree with you. And when I have conversations with teachers that sometimes maybe like, aren't following the curriculum sequence that's laid out by our curriculum coordinators and that, you know, that's one thing I always say, right? If a child from Jenkins in fourth grade moved to Wampe Tuck in March, right? They should be able to have the same common experience that they had at Jenkins. They should be able to make a smooth transition right into our school or the other way around. So that's why it is so important to have consistency. And then I also want to say, even though we are looking at a consistent elementary reading and ELA program, which we absolutely need so that all of our elementary students have a common experience. It is important to keep it individualized and it is important to keep every building having their own culture. And it is also important to, to make sure we're seeing our students as individual students, right, and not trying to just necessarily just fit them into a program, but making sure that the program is going to fit the needs of our students here in situat.
Yeah, I, I also liked how you mentioned about during the wind block that there are kids that need additional, not necessarily support to reach grade level expectations, but also there are kids that need, they, they arrived at grade level and they need extra grade level and, you know, grade level plus. So, you know, the, just that spectrum of student learning and experience is important. So it's nice that that's being recognized too and, and taught to kids.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I, I just had one quick comment and a, a question for you. The comment is, I think your, your desire to bring the community into Wampe Tuck is a great thing. You know, my kids have been going to situat schools for nine years and I think it's, you know, this community is very, you know, wanting to be a part of our education. So being able to bring in either different businesses or different areas of the town, I think it's a great thing. Will only benefit and enhance the curriculum and, you know, what your students are learning. So I think that's, that's amazing. One question I have here and actually meant to ask with the principal BD as well is, you know, with your, your win supports that you have for the students that are getting that support, is that something that other students that are, you know, may not need that support are able to take advantage of as well and maybe do on the run at home just to either get that extra help or reinforce what they're learning? Or is it really just for the, the kids that are in those, those three win groups that you had in your presentation?
Um, I'm not sure I totally understand your question. Are you asking about the win time, like if, um, I'm not sure I understand your question, I'm sorry.
So if there was a student that was doing well with ELA, but they wanted that additional work to do, just to make sure that they, they fully grasp the concept, but they, they just want to try to get ahead. Is that something that they're able to also take advantage of or for the services that are provided really just for those kids that, that are part of the, the win group?
No, uh, win is, win is absolutely totally focused around what they need. So we have kids that are getting like extra support and, you know, being re-taught skills and strategies that were taught like during the tier one time that need that extra practice. We have kids that are on grade level that are just practicing grade level strategies or just getting more support in that. And we absolutely have kids that are, that are beyond the grade level standards and are getting acceleration. And so oftentimes that looks like projects too. You know, I can give you a specific example of in a second grade that, um, the, when given the a pre-assessment on the module in Eureka, they scored above ninety percent on the pre-assessment, right? So those students, you know, they pretty much already mastered those skills in that, that unit. So they still take part in the, in the tier one, like whole group lesson, mini lesson, they take part in the warmup. But then they are, they have a project, they have a project that they're working on that is still focused on those same skills in that unit, but they're extending their learning. And then also during their win time, they can continue the work on that project. And, and actually, the specific one I'm talking about, they're wrapping that up and the teacher came to me last week and said they're about ready to present that project and invited me to come see it. So, so it's, it's, it really is really focused on what I need, meaning every student what they need.
Correct, no, that's perfect. And, and thank you for that explanation because I know in the past we've had parents come in and say, well, my kid, you know, they have that ninety percent that they're, they're scoring at, how can I, how can they do more? How can they, you know, not be bored in class and, and really get ahead? So that, you know, that, that's what I was trying to get to with my question, so I apologize if it wasn't clear, but that, that's, that's perfect. So thank you for sharing that.
Sure.
So you know the questions from the committee? Again, Principal Riden, thank you for coming in and presenting this tonight. It was a, a great presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
So next on the agenda, we have new business. So the first item is the school calendar for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So we'll turn it over to Superintendent Burkett.
Thank you Chairman Long, and good evening everyone. Sharing my screen now with the recommended calendar for FY twenty-three. What you will not see on this calendar is the back of the calendar, side two, which is usually the school contact information, school hours and half days. Professional Development Committee is still working on the half days, so we'll be back with that information as they finish. But we wanted to get to sort of as soon as possible, as we know, folks are planning their summers and getting back to school and vacations and, and want to get a, a head start on the planning. So this is a, a lot of what this year's calendar represents. And if you can see, next August into September, September fifth is Labor Day next year. Uniquely, we have a state primaries on the sixth, so there will be no school there. So the first day of school for K, uh, for, excuse me, for one through twelve would be September seventh. And for kindergarten and for early childhood would be September twelfth. We also on this e- early draft wanted to put the expectation nights, so family could plan ahead that first month of September to attend those. And moving into October, there are no school on tenth, which we've determined last year to be Indigenous Peoples' Day. November, there is state elections also. So there'll be no school on that day, likely professional development. And then on Veterans' Day, no school. Half day on typically the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and no school on the Thursday and Friday of Thanksgiving. Wing down to December. We did put in the elementary parent conferences because those are staples in our calendar twice a year. So we put that date down for planning purposes. And then the winter break from the twenty-sixth to the thirtieth. January. New Year's Day is observed on the second, so folks would come back on the third. And Martin Luther King Junior Day is on the sixteenth of January next year. Moving into February, President's Day is the twentieth, which kicks off February vacation that week. March, again, early release for elementaries only for parent conferences. April seventh is Good Friday. And then seventeenth is Patriots' Day, which kicks off the rest of the week of April vacation. And May twenty-ninth is Memorial Day. And then the hundred eightieth day of school is June twentieth. And also want to point out on June nineteenth, there's no school for the holiday of Juneteenth. And the hundred and eighty-five days are built in five days of snow days, as you can see here, brings us to twenty-seventh, which gives us another three days, eight total, which is, which is, I believe, ample time before we get to June thirtieth in this calendar. So I'll answer any questions, but that's the draft calendar for your, for your discussion and conversation.
Are there any questions from the committee for Superintendent Burkett?
No, Mike, I think it seems very reasonable. Superintendent Burkett, can you just confirm, I know you said, I just want to make sure, so the Tuesday, September sixth and November eighth, those are election dates, but most likely staff would come in, but it would be no school for students, is that the?
Yeah, that's typically what we've done. And again, the PD committee's working on that, but that's typically what happens because of parking. We use the gyms to vote in high school and there's what I understand past practice has been, that's a problem, but we do, will have enough room for staff parking in professional development. So those days would be available for professional development.
I think it sounds good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Ela, I have a question. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mike.
I just want to follow up on Peter's question. So the, the two days for professional development next year would be September sixth and November eighth. Those would be the, you know, the two days we'd have development on.
Oh, we, we have four, so those are yet to be determined. So again, the PD committee is working on those, so I'll have to come back. And another meeting to solidify those dates as well as any half days that we have typically during the year. So those are omitted right now from this calendar because they're not done yet.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question to the?
Oh, yeah, mine's about something else, so go right ahead.
So if, um, Bill, if the two election days are used as PD days and the election, I mean, the PD committee picks two extra days, does that mean there'll be two other days that they won't be school?
Unnecessarily. Keep in mind, we have the, typically we go the week before.
Okay, so.
August thirtieth, thirty-first, or the first of September, we have.
Including those.
We have those days available.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Bill, my question is about April vacation week. So, you know, as a person that enjoys leveraging the max time that, how do I say this nicely? You know, you want to spend nice time with your family and all that. So I'm, I know, I kind of understand one, one respect of this. It's, you know, if April vacation started on the seventh, technically we could go through the sixteenth and have it be flowing with the Good Friday the way it does most years. And I know if we had it on a different week, that would probably mess up other people's, I mean, if every other district is doing it this way and ours wasn't this week, it would be weird for logistics, I would imagine. But I don't know, it just seems weird that it's separated.
I, I think it's always, I think it's just been traditionally the week of
Yeah, that third week, right.
Patriots' Day, so that's, that's the only reason. It's the school committee's purview though, whatever you want to do.
I, I just have a comment, Mike. I think, I like how like the first day of school, the last day of school are green or just in a color. I would like just to see what it would look like maybe in a different color. Not this, not this year, what it would, uh, it would look like to start school before Labor Day and then where that would end. You know, because I know, I think last year we looked at if we did start school before Labor Day, where, where the last day of school would be. I know it's kind of tricky with the election.
Yeah, and I think Janice can actually, and I could be wrong, but it, it's like Wednesday and Thursday, so the thirty-first and first for the two days we could have school, so we'd really be able to back up two days. I think that Friday has to be a contract, the second would have to be a contractual day off. So we'd go Wednesday, Thursday, have
Yeah.
Five days off and then come back on the seventh.
Yeah. I can dream.
Under your purview, just, it takes three of us.
It's just unfortunate that there hasn't been a state-level solution to snow days, honestly. Because, I mean, who wants to get out that late, you know? I mean, it's just not beneficial to anyone, really. And yet, there's just no kind of state-level guidance decisions, proactivity on that anymore. That's just, you know, my general ranting about that, but.
Well, I think if we, if the state, and I think I've, I've heard grumblings about doing away with February and April break
Right.
in doing just March.
Spring break.
That would, you know, that would free up some days in June.
Yeah.
That would be a state-level thing.
Right, I mean, I had high hopes with obviously, you know, virtual learning, all these things, like this is it. This is going to, someone's going to do this now with, you know, you know, the pandemic situations and yet here we are, like back to the.
Believe in four or five years ago, did they came up with those Blizzard bag?
I know.
For days, and then they killed it. We were all set and ready to go and then they, they said you can't do it now. You know, ideally, you're right, because of COVID, what we've learned over the past couple of years would be an easy way for us to be able to not lose days. I mean, having a three-day weekend and having a, I'm assuming a half day on the twentieth for the last day of school is rough too, but you know, and that's just how the hundred and eighty days fall.
Yeah, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, this is all, it's not like we can go rogue on this because it's tied to time on learning and state requirements and all of that.
I'm not sure what you mean.
Like, if we can't, we have to take, we can't do Blizzard bag type days or the state won't accept remote work any, as time on learning.
That's correct, the, uh.
We have no flexibility.
Yeah, the commissioners are hard knowing that right now.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
Uh, so Superintendent Burkett, I know this is something that the, the town has asked for a couple of times, so appreciate you putting this together. And this was listed as something that we could vote tonight. I mean, if you're still looking at the PD days, does it make sense to await to formally vote this in your mind and maybe put this on the school website as a, you know, draft on it? So people know that this isn't finalized or would it make sense to potentially vote this tonight? And then, you know, just knowing that we'd have to come back and amend it in the future. Potential, I'm sorry, potentially amend it with the PD day.
Yeah, my recommendation, I think we've done this la- last year, we voted, we didn't have the back page done either. We voted just as a draft and then we added amendment on another meeting, just so folks could be could start their planning. I know there's been a lot of community feedback that we have the calendar shared at this meeting or the meetings before so they can start planning. If they knew that the first day of school was in, solidified for the 7th and certain holidays, I think that would help families in their planning. That's. And I don't think the, the, the foundation of this calendar would not change with the addition of the half days and in staff PD days. So I guess, you know, my recommendation would be you could, you could vote it as is, as a, as a working draft, and then we can come back and amend it at another meeting with the professional development days.
Okay, and that's fine. I just want to make sure, you know, in your mind, there wasn't some drastic change that we should have to worry about. But I mean, I agree with you. I think knowing the first day of school is important for families right now. And then, you know, having a general idea of when school could end next, at the end of next year is also important. So, I mean, what you said makes sense. So seeing no other questions from the committee, is there a motion on the school calendar that was presented tonight?
I can make a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 school calendar as presented.
A second.
Okay, so do a roll call vote, Ms. Lombon.
Yes.
Ms. Brandalini.
Yes.
Dr. Warkowski.
Yes.
Long, yes, and Mr. Gates.
Yes.
All right, thank you all. And Superintendent Burke, I just can go on the school website later this week and just, you know, obviously mention that it's a draft somewhere so that people are aware.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Although I did want to vote no, just because I think we should all vote no in every school committee in the whole state so that they, the state looks at the calendars and figures out a better way than adding on these days, day by day by day, until it's almost July. All right, I'm done now.
So moving along. Next on the agenda, we have the mask golf donation proposal. So I know in our last meeting, we received information regarding the generous donation that was provided by Mask Golf to our, our girls' golf team. It was listed as a discussion item only on the agenda, but, you know, it's obviously something that typically when there's a donation like that, we would vote to accept it with great appreciation. Like I said, Mr. Payne and Dr. McGuire were on, so unless there are any questions on the donation, we can just vote on the donation as it was presented.
I can make a motion.
Thank you.
I make a motion that the school committee accept from Mask Golf a donation with great appreciation to support the continuation of the high school girls' golf team for the spring of 2022.
A second.
Thank you. So a roll call vote again. Long, yes, Ms. Lombon.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Dr. Warkowski.
Yes.
And Ms. Brandalini.
Yes.
Thank you. So next on our agenda is contract with Murphy, Lemire and Murphy. So that is the legal counsel at the school committee has used in the, for many years in the past as a legal counsel. In our executive session in the, our last meeting on the 14th, we met and reviewed the contract. Aren't there any questions for the committee for either myself or Superintendent Burkett? If not, I'll understand a motion on the, the legal contract that we reviewed.
I'll make motion to accept the agreement offered by Murphy, Lemire and Murphy, PC of Braintree to provide legal services to the situat public schools commenting, commencing July 1st, 2022 through July 30th, 2025 as presented.
A second.
June 30th, right, Nicole?
June 30th, yes, 2025.
Okay, just want to make sure the motion's right.
Now, now.
Thank you. So do a roll call vote again. Long, yes, Ms. Lombon.
Yes.
Brandalini.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
And Dr. Warkowski.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. So moving on to old business, the first item we have is the non-resident tuition rate adjustment. I thought I'll turn it over to Dr. Bobert.
All right. Thanks for having me on the agenda. It was about maybe six weeks ago or eight weeks ago, I had presented a proposal to increase our, the tuitions that we charge students that are attending our separate programs who do not live in Situate. So I had proposed that we raise the tuition to $35,000 for next school year for the school year program and $4,000 for the summer school program. And then each year for the school year program, raise it by another thousand. So for the school year 23, 24, to raise the price to 36,000 and for the school year 24, 25, to raise it at 37,000 while keeping the summer school tuition 4,000. So the reasoning behind that is, you know, costs are increasing and it costs us anywhere, depending on the program, from 30 to $38,000 per student in these programs. And that doesn't include any possible, you know, raises of staff or pool increases or overhead costs or the cost of the nurse or other, other kinds of costs. It still is well below the tuition charged by the collaborative. So we're not like being competitive with them. It's just a way of recouping what our actual costs are. So I think we're asking for a vote. I don't know if you remember the discussion last time or if you have any questions.
I remember the presentation well. Were there any questions from the committee on the rate adjustment that Dr. Bobert had proposed?
I don't, Mike, but Dr. Bobert, just a question. How do we communicate the cost increase to the sending districts? Do we just send it to them if they ask, or do we say your tuition's going up next year for any potential news, indolence, this is what the cost is? I'm just curious how that process works.
Yeah, for existing students, I'll certainly let the special ed directors know. And I, we have a student that someone had reached out to me and I said that, you know, it's most likely going to be increased. But we, we will certainly let them, let them know as soon as it's approved.
And I believe you said this in your presentation, but this was something that really just keeps us in line with other the running cost that we have to run these programs as well as, you know, it's comparable against everybody else or every other school district or collaborative.
Well, you know, so it's definitely cheaper than the collaborative by at least, you know, $10,000. And there was, there was a range in the cost that other districts were charging. So I would say it was probably more in the middle. But it is, you know, I did it based on what it actually costs us. Because I think that's a fair way to do it. We, you know, we do have relatively small class sizes, we're, we're well-staffed now. So this is what it costs us. I think that's fair. Some districts just don't have enough students of a certain student profile to weren't having a program. I don't think this is cost prohibitive. It's about a $6,000 increase from what we're charging, you know, this year. And that's why we are phasing it in over a few years. So.
Thank you.
I can make a motion if you're looking for one.
I was about to ask one.
Make a motion to approve the non-resident tuition for the summer program to $4,000. School year to $35,000 with an additional $1,000 increase for each subsequent year, fiscal year 24 would be 36,000 and fiscal year 25 to be 37,000.
Second.
Thank you. So do a roll call vote. Long, yes, Ms. Brandalini.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Ms. Lombon.
Yes.
And Dr. Warkowski.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So moving on in the agenda, the next item listed is the school committee goals. So what I'm going to do is share my screen. It was brought up by at least two members of the school committee as well as, I know it came up from several people in town, but this year we had never formally, formally reviewed and approved school committee goals for the 2021, 2022 school year. What I did for the committee last week was I sent out just a quick listing of the goals that we have currently and are listed on the school website as well as the superintendent goals. It's all just came directly from the presentation that he provided a couple of months, a couple of meetings ago. As well as the proposed goals based on conversations that we've had in our meetings. Really from July up to now. I know there are a lot of things going on between having a new school committee member come on in September. Fraternity season, there were some contract negotiations that went into the, the fall. This never made the agenda. So shame on us for never actually getting this onto the agenda and formally reviewed and voted on, but because it did come up from several members of the committee, I did want to make sure that really put this in front of ourselves to make sure that, one, this is the type of goals that we would be looking for to to have for the district, for, from the school committee perspective for the district of this year. All three of the goals really go to what we've discussed over the course of all of our meetings from the beginning of the school year to now. The first goal is, I'm not going to read each one specifically, but the first goal was really around transparency and providing the town with a comprehensive view of what is going on in the school district. The second goal is around providing a safe and respectful environment for all students and staff. And then the third goal is around just having a healthy environment coming out of the pandemic and then you know, making sure that what, what is going on outside of structured class time is really with the, you know, we're not overburdening our students and our families, but at the same time, we're providing all of the, you know, providing, setting the right guidelines for ensuring that we have a rigorous education for, for our students, but also a healthy work-life balance. The reason I wanted to put this in front of the committee tonight is just one, to make sure that this is in line with what everyone from the community is expecting, as well as, you know, if we wanted to vote this tonight, we could, but if the committee wants to take this back and review it further and then come back, we definitely can. I think it's some feedback, so Janice had asked me to add a little bit of language into the third bullet. Dr. Warkowski provided some language changes that I had put into what I just shared on the screen, small wording here and there, but the and the crux of the goals that we had put together didn't change. So I can put that back on the screen again if people wanted to see it. I was shaking my head. All right, I can't see you all when I'm sharing. I'm just trying to make sure that I don't miss anything. But I'll turn it over to the committee for any questions or comments or next steps on how you want to proceed, because really the five of us is a whole to move forward on this.
So Mike, I think one, one thing that I thought we should add is in bullet number two is that we show support for people of all ethnicities, sexual orientation. We should have a sexual identity as well. Thank you.
I like that, Janice. I think it fits cohesively with what we just saw even from principal word in about WAPATACs. The WAPATAC statement.
Any other comments or suggestions from those of the committee?
I'm just wondering, given the conversations we've had around academic excellence, how we're all feeling about whether that needs to be explicitly in here? I mean, I see it in, for example, two and three. So I'm just wondering if we want to be more intentional. So I'm, I'm asking my colleagues how they're feeling about that.
And one thing, Carrie, as you, as you move forward, so obviously we're coming up towards the end of the year and you bring up education, rightfully bring up educational excellence as a talking point with a lot of the questions that you ask. I don't know if we want to put that in here or if we want to put that into the next, the goals for next year. That's a good point to bring up.
Yeah, I would, I mean, like I said, I, I see it in here, so I'm not as worried, but just wanted to bring it up as a point for folks to think about.
Also, I'm thinking about the website and how, you know, it ties into, think about the website being completely overhauled and as well. That might even be a goal that sticks around for 22, 23. I'd love to have another workshop too, Mike. You know, the mask workshops are helpful.
Yeah, I tried to get mask. I know we'd use them, I think, last year, so 2020, 2021. Based on timelines, we just couldn't get them and then try to get a date to work with the committee. But I, I mean, I agree, if we can leverage them again going forward, we definitely should.
Mike, can you just clarify? Did you say that Janice submitted some feedback? Is, it's not in here or it is in here?
It is. So the only change.
Okay.
Was I added in.
Okay.
The restrictions caused by the pandemic.
Right, okay.
Specifically related to health of students and stuff.
Okay. I mean, I will say, just for myself, with the addition of Janice and Nicole's suggestion around identity, I would be comfortable moving forward. That's just, you know, just in the interest of being transparent about it.
And as we move forward with this, going into the end of the year and, and over the summer, we should definitely have a postmortem. I think Peter had brought this up to me, just making sure that, you know, we really share with the community how we felt if the goals are met or not. As I mentioned, this is all based on recurring themes that we've had across the entire year. Even though they weren't specifically listed in as specific goals, it was something that we, you know, have been working with Superintendent Burkett and his administration to make sure it's covered and met. So. You know, again, it was more just the formal, putting the goals in front of everybody, need to choose to take a vote tonight or in the future, or how we wanted to proceed.
Well, do we have to wait because the agenda didn't say vote? It just says discussion.
Nope. So the formal agenda that went out does say discussion slash vote, the blue, blue backup only says discussion.
I was looking at the blue backup.
I was going to say, I thought it did. I thought it's a discussion vote, but I just pulled it up on my phone to make sure that.
Well, I think I, maybe to what I suggested tonight, the, just tweak it to, to gender identity instead of sexual identi- sexual orientation and gender identity.
Would you want it to read ethnicity, sexual orientation, sexual identities and religious beliefs?
Gender, gender identities.
Yep. Okay. I just take the wording, so if you want to just, whoever makes the motion has amended. I'll make sure that that's what goes back to Kim for the website.
I mean, I'm okay. Do you want somebody, want me to make a motion then?
I mean, it's up to the committee. If you want to make a motion tonight, you can. If not, if you want to wait, that's fine. That's all. That's that's the committee as a whole. I mean, if you feel comfortable and you want to make a motion, and there's a second, we can take a vote.
I can make a motion. I make a motion that the school committee accepts the school committee goals for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two calendar year. Is that correct?
Yep.
I'll second.
So do a roll call vote. Ms. Lim Long?
Yes.
Long, yes. Ms. Brandalini?
Yes.
Dr. Wacowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Thank you. So make sure that gets up on the website. As we move into next year, I'll make sure to do this much earlier in the year than at the end of the year, to full power on our point, our side, but, you know, I'll make sure it lines up at the beginning, the beginning of the school year formally next year. So next on the agenda is the leadership reports, the first one being the superintendent's report. So I'll turn it over to Superintendent Burkett.
Thank you, Chairman Gates. I'm going to share my screen.
You're fired, Bill. Call me the wrong name again.
Did I say Mr. Long? No? Chairman Long?
No, he said Mr. Gates.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chairman Long, thank you. So I just wanted to kind of go over a recent seaside chat that I held on March fifteenth, two sessions, one at one thirty and one at six thirty in the senior center. So I want to thank our friends over at senior center in the town for allowing us to use that beautiful facility. And I just wanted to kind of give the feedback to school committee and our school community on what I surmised from our meetings. And so there were, over those two sessions, you know, my opening to the, to the community members was that I would stay till the time needed to answer all questions and to listen to all voices. So we went about five hours total. I think it was approximately two and a half and two and a half hours each. There are approximately fifty community members. I believe there were thirteen in the afternoon session and thirty seven in the evening session. And as had been highlighted before, it was an opportunity for, especially after the long pandemic and you know, me being in my second year, it was an opportunity for me to get together in person with the community and to let them be heard and for me to listen and to respond as best I could, but also to learn a lot, and I did. And I think the whole evening started or afternoon evening started with a point of agreement. As I think most of us would agree, a lot of these decisions we've had to make, committee and myself, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, and our parents and families and students, a lot of them had been polarizing. And so I wanted to make sure that this communication with our community members started off with a point of agreement, which is we're all here to do what's best for our children. By starting out that way, I had no disagreement. We were starting off at the same point, and I think that proved well. So what I heard is a lot of history through personal stories, which is very powerful, and people shared stories from years ago to recent. So it gave me a good perspective on the history of Situate and some of the concerns that had accumulated over time and also some of the celebrations that have happened, some of the things that we're proud of in our district. There was a lot of passion in the room. Feedback was from the heart. At times it was extremely emotional, so I really appreciate the courage in our community members to in a group of that size to be able to share with me their personal perspectives. And there was respect. The conversations were sometimes intense. And not everyone agreed with each other, certainly. But I believe everyone allowed each person to speak without interruptions. There was no back and forth or arguments among guests. And I thought that was really a milestone and a breakthrough for us as a community, because it was really healthy. And it's really healthy to come and be able to disagree, be in the same room, share ideas, be heard, be listened to, and be respected. So those are some of my thoughts on the initial conversations. And just some of the highlights, and again, I have more notes on this, but I just didn't want to spend too much time and just want to glean some of the highlights that I was heard, I heard over the course of the two sessions. There was a lot of talk about books we are reading or have read in the past, or a lot of past, again, past examples brought up, but again, this helps us if there were concerns or problems to not repeat those same issues. Age appropriateness and content of what books we're reading. Parent notification or communication and involvement in the process was brought up. And the possibility for options of alternative reading was a hot topic. Also brought up was the high school honor slash college prep combination courses, some of the history of that, some of the pros and cons from the community's perspective, which was very helpful as we move forward. It was nice to see that there was thoughts about continuing recognition of our great staff and the potential of the National Board board certification for teachers, which is really very high honor for our teachers. So that's something that we could look into, and it's a lot of work, but that, again, was a great recommendation from the community. More hands-on opportunities, woodshop tech engineering, as we all know, public schools back several years ago. A lot of these things were lost and have not been restored. So again, hands-on opportunity for our students was a interest from our community. And then traditions of academic excellence, posting of, and just some examples, posting of the honor roll, our Situate's engineering prowess in highlights and in celebrating students and staff in their moments of excellence. Next, opportunities for acceleration, which we heard examples of through the last two state of the schools from Cushing and Wapatac and Gates also tonight, and you'll hear, I think, more of those in the state of the schools as we go forward. Which leads into the theme of all this, which is enhanced and increased communication. Next was DEI, mixed opinions, request for more communication clarification. I think that the word indoctrination came up a few times of our curriculum and I was very clear that that's not the case, but I think also that if enough people are saying that, then there needs to be better communication and clarification. And again, I know not everyone attends these meetings tonight, so that's part of our communication plan moving forward. We heard a lot of that tonight and very clear examples by Ms. Riordan in her presentation, and I know we've heard those throughout the year. So just continue to do that and to make sure that we get that communication and clarification about exactly what our equity work is and that it is for all students and beneficial to our district and all of our kids. Again, we heard this tonight, consistency across elementary schools. I think we've done a lot of concerted effort on this. Obviously, a shout out to, you know, Ms. Triscoe and all her efforts focusing on this, our principals and our department chairs and coordinators have really worked hard on that consistency, and I think you're starting to see it. And it can only improve there. And some examples were curriculum, PTO, work and celebrations. Again, another theme that treating all children equitably and capital all. And again, that's our home away from home theory and philosophy and love, inclusion and trust philosophy. So we brought up our rallies, things we're working on, parents and community members appreciated that. And the last one, some parents, again, feeling unheard or diminished when bringing concerns forward. This, a lot of this was historic. But also some current examples, and again, I appreciate that. And so we're really working on it at the school level of you know, responding with empathy and with understanding and with good communication and transparency with our families and communities, so that trust is built and that parents are able to voice their questions and concern. And I think these seaside chats are a perfect example of that. I think we all really worked hard at listening, being good listeners and responding respectfully and working on, again, back to that common goal of doing what's best for our students, all of our students. Nobody, I think, can disagree with that. If we want to be the best district in the world, that every child should be treated with respect. And then just some actual steps and priorities that, you know, we've already been working on, but some, some things that highlighted, were highlighted through this, that I did want to share with the community. You know, again, I think we've, in the last two years, have done a good job of communicating with families. Again, it can always be better, and that's our focus, transparency in our curriculum and family partnerships. I give the example of transparency in our budget process has really been, I think, given, we've been given strong and positive feedback on that. And I want folks to know that we're really working hard in our transparency in our curriculum and making family partnerships, because I also think that there's accountability for the schools, but there's also accountability for our families and our students. So I think it's a, it's a team game. I think if we're all working hard on that common goal to do what's best for kids, I really think we have something special there. That will be our movement going forward. And then next, to recognize the efforts of our individual teachers at the beginning of each year throughout and throughout, to communicate with parents about experience in classes. So we're really going to look to some consistency here, like we've done with some of our other examples. In fairness to the teachers, to give them some expectations on how we're going to communicate and how often home. And we've got some exemplars in our district, obviously, and we want to make sure that experience is consistent for all families that they get in our staff. So we'll be working on that throughout this year and into next year. We recognize that the community wants to elevate our transparency further in the dedicated terms of the curriculum acceleration committee and are exploring ways to elevate this transparency. So we do, in case folks aren't aware, we do have a curriculum acceleration committee that is a representative group of individuals that is constantly working on and improving our curriculum. And a big part of that focus will be on transparency. I know in the school committee goals, that was mentioned up on the website, so we we not only want to get that so folks can see it and have easy access to it, but also that we're communicating home regularly. And then the other part that we talked about is that when families do connect with us and communicate with us, that we have those either phone conversations, in-person conversations are our best versus email, and that we're connecting and working really hard and making one-to-one connections with home. And just an example, we'll be sharing out more about Arcade Five curriculum. I know that came up tonight. Our revision process and our resource calibration with our new reading program. I want to give a shout out to Ms. Gregory and those dedicated and committed teachers that have agreed to do that. So again, more information coming as part of our process on transparency, and I believe that students and families will have an opportunity to offer feedback into those pilot programs as well. And then again, back to the DEI and the miscommunication there and the misconceptions there, we're going to continue our transparency and how we continue to incorporate you know, love and inclusion and trust in a sense of belonging for all students. Again, you know, I think this all ties back to we're doing some great things, but we're not always necessarily communicating it in ways where everyone gets the message. So we'll, we'll continue to work on that. Mutual respect between home and school, and again, this goes both ways. I know the parents had mentioned that they you know, sometimes have felt you know, not fully respected, maybe or heard. I think that goes for families as well when parents, when teachers reach out and administrators that families understand is a two-way street. We're all here for your child. Let's work together. Let's be respectful. And I think that goes a long way into building a great relationship founded on trust. And again, an obvious one that I've been kind of the theme here is ongoing communication improvement, and I'll end by saying that we're really working hard on listening and feedback. So if you weren't able to make the seaside chats, please reach out to myself or any one of our central office staff, principals. We'd be happy to share more about what we're doing and what's happening again to start those and continue those conversations about what building the greatest school in the world looks like, and we need everybody's support and help in doing so. That's my report for this evening. Chairman Long?
Superintendent Burkett, are there any questions or comments from the committee?
I have a quick question, Peter. Just if there's any plan on holding any future seaside chats, like quarterly or or as needed?
Yeah, I, I think they're going to become the norm. I know, I know a handful of our principals, again, eventually all will be doing this, if not all. I think what they might call them something different, coffee with the principal or things like that. I think that it needs to be the norm. And now that, you know, we're moving through hopefully the pandemic and in-person meetings, you know, I just think it was a really powerful opportunity. So the answer is yes. I haven't scheduled the next one yet, but there's likely be at least one more before this year. And then we may move to, like you said, more frequently in the future, maybe quarterly next year. But, but I have found them very helpful to me as superintendent. And I'm hoping others have felt that way. And again, the more we can come together and talk as a community and have respectful conversations, agree to disagree, but also kind of go back to hanging our hat on that, what's best for all of our kids. If we keep going back to that conversation, I think we'll find a lot of common ground. So the answer is yes.
And I know it's come up in at least one or two public comments in the past, Janice, but there's been a request to see if the school committee could do something similar, depending on how is there enough of a push from the community that could be something we also look to do to keep that transparency open. I haven't seen no other questions. Thank you for the update tonight, Superintendent Burkett.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is the leadership report, the next leadership report with Assistant Superintendent Triscoe.
Hi, nice to see all of you tonight. So I'd like to start by giving a sailor shout out to the high school robotics team. That's something that I want to make sure we highlight. They were in their first competition. It's called the First Robotics Greater Boston. It's a New England district event that was held at Revere High School. And this was their first competition, and they won the highest rookie seed in the Rookie All-Star Award. And that's spectacular. They've been very excited, so I want to give a sailor shout out to Ralph Perotto, who's the advisor and to all of the families, super supportive families who were so passionate about making sure these kids got to compete. So congratulations to every single student, and we should be really proud. So I'm actually going to introduce Rich Long. He, if you don't know, is our Director of Technology, and he's going to share some information about our one-to-one rollout, but I also wanted to give some shout outs, sailor shout outs to Rich. If you don't know, he's been working on a lot of initiatives this year. He just launched some safety protocols for us as a district. We now have two-factor authentication. We're working on changing passwords regularly and keeping that as a part of our routine. Those seem like little things, but they're, they are big initiatives with so many people and so many passwords, and they've been making sure that we roll it out in a manageable way through the whole district. So I want to congratulate Rich and his team for moving forward and keeping forward progress this year, and I would love for him to unmute and share his screen to talk to all of you about the one-to-one.
I would hope. Thank you, Heidi. That was very, very nice words you gave me. And yes, I'm going to share my screen right now. There we are. Everyone able to see that? Okay?
Yes.
All right, let's just get this going here. All right, let's just get this going here. Okay, so we're talking about a, a one-to-one deployment of Chromebooks. And just jump right in here. And the question I'm sure everyone is, how can we do this? So one of the upsides of the pandemic was that the federal government was able to provide funding for a number of different action items. And one of these was the emergency connectivity fund, where we were able to apply and identify a shortfall of approximately 1,200 Chromebooks between what we had available to students during the pandemic and what we would have liked to have had. And based on that, we were able to procure funding to purchase 1,200 brand-new Chromebooks. So with that, and then our capital purchasing of an additional 250 plus redistribution of 450 relatively new Chromebooks already existing in the district, we have a total of 1,900 Chromebooks, which is going to give us more than enough to do, to get us pretty far along the way by this fall. So the next question is why, why would we want to do one-to-one? Well, equity is, is a big piece of it. Situ it has a lot of people that can afford to buy their students whatever device they need. But we also have some people that are not so fortunate. And so we want to make sure that every student is equally provided for in the district so that they have equal access to curriculum and technology. Safety and security is, is a big concern. And by putting stu, all students on district-owned devices, we can make sure that they are, that each device is protected and protects the students from exposure to whatever is out there on the internet that we don't want them to see. And then easier access to learning. Every single student will have the same device and this will make it much easier for teachers to instruct them. They won't have to say, okay, everybody that's got a Chromebook, this is what you're going to do. But those three kids over there that are have MacBooks, you're going to have to do it this way. So it's just going to speed things up. And then the final thing is that it will be a significant barrier to student misbehavior because each student will be on a district Chromebook that is going to have software that's going to prevent them from accessing sites that we don't want them to and keeping them on learning, which is the, the point of the whole thing. So here's our roadmap. This spring, we, we have not one-to-one numbers that in K to six. And we're providing enough school devices for for, for MCAST testing. And then we're also eliminating the need for BYOD in grades one through or K through six. And then in the summer or fall, we're going to achieve one-to-one in grades five through 10 and continuing BYOD in grades 11, 12. So that's summer of fall 22. And the reason that we're sticking with BYOD is we don't have, quite have sufficient devices to just go K to 12 just yet. And it seems like grades 11 to 12. From what we can tell, they have the greatest number of BYOD devices as it is. And with them being as close to graduation, it's, it's, it's just simpler to allow them to continue at that way for the time being. And then in fall of 23, grade five will be issued, the new grade five will be issued devices themselves. And continuing into fall of 24, in each existing grade will then graduate to the next year and take their devices with them so that by fall of 24, we should be fully one-to-one in grades K through 12. Any questions? If anybody has any.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a great initiative and I think that one that will be successful. Just have a couple of questions, I guess. Number one is the, the youngest students, say K through four, those device.
Peter, you cut out.
Peter, your, your, your audio is cutting out.
Sorry, every time I talk, it goes off. Sorry, I think my question was, are the youngest, are the elementary kids going to be expected to bring these devices back and forth to school each day or are they going to stay in the classroom?
No, only, only fifth grade will be bringing them back and forth. K to four, they will have one-to-one in numbers only, but those devices will stay in the classroom unless circumstances arise where might won't change our mind about that. But, but typically, no, they'll just stay in the classroom.
Perfect. Two other questions. One is, um, the necessity, do we think that have kindergartners on a Chromebook is necessary in order to be more appropriate to outfit our 11th graders with, with the devices?
Well, the, the kindergartners spend a lot of time on devices. They, they, there's a lot of curriculum that is, is automated now and, and technology-based. So they will be spending a lot of time in, in the classrooms on those devices.
All right, I guess two other questions. The second to last one is, what will happen if a device breaks? What is that process of returning and/or replacing that?
So we have each parent or guardian is, is going to fill out a form acknowledging responsibility for the device. And then things are going to happen. So we're, we're building into the system a certain percentage of extra devices. So that if, you know, nobody's at fault, we're not, we're obviously not going to go after families for every single little thing that happens.
Right.
You know, but if, you know, something is, if there's a pattern of breakage or, you know, the, the, the child has just lost the device or, or there's abuse identified or whatever, we may be forced to charge a family for the replacing of a device. But we're, we're planning on a certain amount of breakage and so we'll have extra devices to address that.
And the last question is, what if a family does not accept the device? And they want to use their own device? Is that an option?
That's not really an option that, that we're fond of. I mean, we can certainly entertain that as an option, but we're, we're going to push hard to try to get everybody with, with all the reasons that I've laid out. I think it's just in everyone's best interest as far as learning goes to accept this and, and go this direction.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hi, I have a kind of a follow-up to Peter's last question, Rich. So, I mean, the main reason for this one-to-one is so, you know, one of the reasons is to have those in place, those safeguards for students. So if a family has a Chromebook already and is it there an option for them to bring it in and have the safeguards put on their own Chromebook or do you, do they have to accept the one that we are offering?
Well, so with, with.
I'd actually like to jump in on this if that's okay. So Chromebooks right now, we can start to think of them as the new textbook. So the same way if you lose a textbook, have a damaged textbook, it would, your Chromebook would sort of be treated as, as such. The Chromebook that we are providing is district property. So if somebody wants to do their personal things on their own device, they can do that on their own device separately. So this is a tool for school and we're trying to make sure that we can keep those things separate. And I, I think that that's a, a part of the view. It's not, we want kids on computers instead of doing their regular things in class. We just need that tool accessible in a way that is consistent. So teachers can use it as a tool and not have it as an obstacle or something they have to overcome. And I think over the pandemic, people did the absolute best they could to make sure they worked with every single type of every single thing. But it is easier for the educational process to have the same tool. And I'm sorry, Rich, if you want to add to that.
Yeah. And, and just to add to what I was saying is, is that, you know, we, we want people to use whatever device they, they have when they're at home. And that's fine, but when they're in school, we have expectations and the, we have the ability to lock these Chromebooks down to where students can only access them with their school account, which is the means that we're going to use to make sure that they're not going to undesirable websites. And with a personal device, we don't have that ability. So a student can choose to, rather than use their school account, just log in with a personal account. And then they can do whatever they want to a certain extent, comparably to if they're on a, a school-owned device.
Okay, so I, I guess a, a follow-up to that maybe is for Heidi, is it one of the, so is one of the byproducts of the pandemic and the hybrid learning was that there were like some bumps with people having different devices? I mean, I think the majority of kids probably have like a typical Chromebook, but it just was one thing that was, you found that it would have been easier if everybody had the same device.
Well, in general, so imagine I'm teaching a novel and you each have different versions of the same novel. And I say, go to page 16. I can't say go to page 16 because you all have different versions of it. So that doesn't actually deal with the teaching of the English or the connection of the novel, but it has to do with my process of connecting you to what we're trying to do that. So it's, it's just another tool.
Okay. And my, my last question to Rich. So that when a student turns in their Chromebook, if they're, you know, when they're in high school, are we refurbishing those Chromebooks to then roll over to give to the younger grades?
Yeah, if there's still life left on those devices and yes, they would roll down to whatever grade was appropriate at the time. They might go to fifth grade. We'll just kind of assess as, as the time, you know, at the time as to where they should go and serve most greatly.
All right. Thank you.
And I just had a quick question. What is the, the typical lifespan of a Chromebook? I mean, do we expect every three or four years, we're going to have to start replacing Chromebooks? We're going to try to do that, phase it over 400 a year or whatever the case may be. So they're kind of a, a large hit.
If you're talking about the life of the hardware, we've, we've been able to stretch these Chromebooks out over six, seven years. And then there's also the auto expiration date, which is a date that Google sets on every Chrome device as to when they will stop supporting it with software updates. And the, the Chromebooks that we're buying now have an auto expiration date somewhere between eight and nine years in the future. So it's potentially, a, a student could receive a device in fifth grade. It'll carry them through graduation. Do we expect that that's going to happen for every student? Absolutely not. But I think we're, we're, we're hopeful that we can get five, six years out of each device on average.
Okay. No, and I think that's good that, you know, keeps it going for a length of time. It's not every two years, every three years returning around and.
Yeah, no, I don't think we're looking at that, you know, minimum, you know, some kids are going to just lose or ruin their device and those are going to not last that long. But for them, I would say on average, we, we, we should expect five or six years.
And with each Chromebook is that we're going to give the kids a Chromebook and a charger? And say, if you want to get a case, get your own, like we're not going to go beyond.
Yeah, we're not, we're not providing cases. We're providing a Chromebook and a charger for each student.
And that's fine. I just want to make sure that was clear. And, and what you and Mr. Triscoll explained made a lot of sense in terms, in terms of why we would provide a Chromebook versus really wanting students to bring their own. I think after a couple of years, we'll probably get to the point where, you know, kids won't have ones. They'll, they'll just begin their own starting the younger grades. As we do that rollout, we should just make sure that we have like an FAQ list or something like that where it's clear for the reasoning for families. I mean, you explained it well tonight, but just making sure it's, you know, the reasoning and some of the things we're trying to control. And the examples provided tonight were, made a lot of sense. It's just, you know, translating that to family so that they're not like, well, I have my own. Why are you going to give me two or why do I have to have my kid have multiple Chromebooks?
Yeah, and we kind of just laid out broad strokes tonight, but we can certainly, when it comes time for an official communication with parents, we'll, we'll provide a lot more detail as far as that goes.
Yep. And, and that's what I expected tonight, you know, the broad strokes versus the defined grain details, but okay. Thank you for that.
Mike, I have another question came to mind. Maybe this is for Bill, maybe for Rich, I'm not sure, or maybe for Dr. Dutch. Are we going to plan to, just going to go as part of our budget in a couple, probably what, three years? We'll have to begin to budget it. Is that how we're looking at it, replacing a couple hundred a year?
Yeah. So I would say that, you know, every year there's going to, we're going to, at least for the, the next few years, the, the plan would be to purchase an additional 250 Chromebooks using capital funding. And then based on how things are going, how long they're lasting, we may need to up that number to make sure that we maintain the one-to-one numbers that we want K to 12.
Okay. All right. And then my final last, final question really is to ask, kind of follow up what Mike just asked. In the communication piece, I would say communication, obviously, as he said, is important, but also the timeliness of it, because I have a feeling some families may consider purchasing their own devices this summer in anticipation of their students, maybe, I don't know, let's say going to middle school. So if we can get the communication out early to the district and say, hey, listen, this is the plan going forward. If your child is in, you know, grade six through 10, we're anticipating providing them a Chromebook.
Yeah, and this is the first step of the communication is to just lay it out for school committee and the, and the public who's paying attention tonight. And, and soon after, we will just, we'll provide that official communication district-wide. So everybody should know within the next week or two that this is the plan and to plan accordingly.
No, it's evident that you guys have been working on this for a while. This is just the first time that, that we've seen it. So, you know, you guys have all these questions answered, just nice to hear them. And I know you guys have to do a good job with the rollout. I think it's a great initiative. Obviously there'll be some obstacles to overcome. I think we got the right people on it and looking forward to getting it going.
Yep.
I'm sorry, Rich, I have one last question for you. So you had said that from the Chromebooks that the district provides, the student will want to be able to log in using their student ID. If I have my own Chromebook at home and I want to use that, you know, to log in and access like my Google Docs and work on, on schoolwork, I'll still be able to log in to my personal Chromebook, correct?
Yeah, if you have your personal Chromebook, you can log in with whatever account you want.
Okay. But we're not going to limit that to you. You can only use the school Chromebook.
Yeah, no, we have no plans of managing personal devices.
Okay, but you're not limiting.
Yeah, the only, the only, the only caveat there is if a student is using a personal device and they log in with their school account, there are policies that are applied at the account level. So they would receive those policies even though it's their personal device. Just, and if they, if they want to have an unfettered experience on their device, they simply log in with a personal account.
Yep. And that makes sense. I'm thinking more, you know, a kid goes on vacation, they don't want to have to bring two Chromebooks, have to remember which one's their school one and.
Sure. Yeah, they can, that's the difference is with a, with a, with a personal device, they can use it both ways. They can log in with their school account and then, and they will be limited. They, they'll, our, our, our content filtering that we're paying for is going to be applied when they log in with their school account. Even if they're, you know, vacationing in the Caribbean, whatever, it doesn't matter. The, the, it's account level controls. So, but if they want to play games or whatever, they just log out and log in with their personal account and then they're fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have other questions? Do you know the question? Thank you both for that presentation tonight. It was very informative.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, we have an update from Dr. Dutch.
Hey, thank you. So I'd like to give you another update on the Hatherley MSBA project. So we'll take a look at where we are now first. We've just finished the eligibility phase. And as part of that eligibility phase, there was an enrollment study done. During the enrollment study, they reviewed our current enrollment figures. They reviewed housing data, new construction and housing sales over the last ten years. As well as permitting, moving on for the next, next couple of years. And they reviewed birth data, both historical and projected moving forward. Based on the age of residents in town and their. Their actuarial abilities. And what that they determined based on that. Was a projected enrollment for a combined Hatherley and Cushing School, four hundred and sixty students. Obviously, that's less than the total number of students in the two schools separately currently. So obviously, there there'd be some minor redistricting. Mostly from the perspective that Jenkins School is a little bit under-enrolled. As far as the space that exists there. What what that Hatherley Cushing School would look like is still to be determined. The second part of the completion of the eligibility phase was the establishment of a feasibility study agreement. And that outlines how much money we will spend as well as our reimbursement rate. So we submitted a an amount to the town of one point one million dollars, which was approved at. The fall town meeting. That is then broken down in amounts to the owner project manager. Receiving three hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars as a budgeted amount. Four hundred, six hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred for the designer, who's the architect. We then budget a certain amount for environmental and site testing. And then a contingency of fifty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars. They have determined that our reimbursement rate would be forty-three percent, both for the feasibility study. As well as for the project itself. There are percentage points that can be granted. For a variety of things, most notably that we would be eligible for potentially. Is if we plan to build a green school or one that that meets the LEEDs. One or leads to standard. So that's kind of where we we are at this point. So the next steps, we've been moved into module two. In module two, we form the project team. The project team consists of the owner's project manager, who's an OPM, which is the OPM. The designer, who's an architect. And then the mass certified procurement officer. The the town hat will have their own certified procurement officer. There are three that exist in the town. As far as I know, there may be more. Nancy Holt, the town accountant, is a procurement officer. The town administrator, Mr. Boudreaux, is a procurement officer, and I have the certification as well. So you've got three people who can act in that role. Basically, that position makes sure that we are following all the state regulations from the Inspector General's Office. On procurement of services and materials. So moving into the selection of the OPM. So the first thing that will happen is an OPM selection committee will be formed. The building subcommittee that is specific to this project will identify who the selection committee is. The only requirement is that there be a certified procurement officer. As part of that selection committee. They don't have to be a voting member, but they do have to be involved in in the committee. And that would generally be about five people, so it wouldn't be a very large committee. That committee would then develop with with me a request for services. Which would outline what we're looking for as a service. What the challenges are, the thoughts are, as we we think about the feasibility study. That was done a couple of years ago when we did the statement of interest originally. And then once the MSBA approves that request for services, we would advertise. As required by law, we've got to advertise in the central register. And then we'd also have to advertise in a local paper, either the Mariner or the Patriot Ledger. We can also advertise on our website, and there are other places we could advertise as well, but we're required. At least to advertise in two places. The selection committee would then evaluate the proposals. In the in the process of developing that request for services, we would outline the criteria. Upon which we're going to be evaluating the proposals. Each of the applicants. From our request for services would be assigned a grade based on those evaluations. We would then conduct interviews of the top three grades. We would check references for all three of those. And then based on those three pieces of information, their grade, their interview. And a reference check, we would make a selection, send that selection to the MSBA. Once they review it and approve our selection, basically looking at the process that we used. To make sure that the process was fair and followed the law. We would be able to then sit down with the the chosen applicant and negotiate cost. So what's unique about this process is when when they submit a bid. For our, through our request for services, there is no pricing included. It's purely based on qualifications. Then we negotiate a cost. If we can't come to terms, we would go to the second choice and try to negotiate costs with them. Once we've negotiated a cost, we would execute the contract and again. Share that with MSBA to make sure that the contract meets state requirements. What I also should have mentioned as we developed the request for services. We can, we can make this as narrow as we want, so it could be simply for the feasibility study. Which is module three, or we could include it to the bidding and the actual construction. For the project itself, depending on what we want to do. And obviously, we can always go back out to bid. For the last parts of this, which is the actual construction. Once we have our owner project manager, we then move into the designer selection projects. We we select an architect. This is a very different process. Again, it's qualification-based. There is a panel for the MSBA. They would identify three designers for us to choose from. Based on qualifications. We would then interview those designers and again, score them based on their qualifications. And the interviews, their references, and then negotiated with the highest rated designer. Again, this would have to be approved by the MSBA and then execute the contract. Once that's completed, we would then move into module three, which is the feasibility study. And and that's when we would begin to engage the public and our school community in identifying. What the new school looks like, grade configurations. What will the facilities consist of, design. All kinds of issues and decisions to be made would happen within the feasibility study. So just to to kind of give you a timeline for all of this. It's anticipated that we will be going to MSBA with our choice. For the OPM for their July eleventh meeting. Be able to then begin the process of the designer selection. Component of this and have that completed by the end of the summer, so that in late, early to mid-September. We would have the designer on board and could start the feasibility study with a target of completing that. So that we could be before the board, the MSBA. To move into schematic design, which is the the next phase after that. By July of twenty twenty-three. So that's, that's where we are at this point with the ultimate goal of having a shovel in the ground in twenty twenty-five. Questions?
Any questions from the committee for Dr. Dutch?
I know, I think that's helpful. Could you just comment a little bit on the, I know the big issue was the enrollment study. I know we've mentioned it a couple of times. I know that some work that you and I think Bill and some others did to to kind of. Advocate on our behalf of slightly greater enrollment they originally predicted. Could you just? Tell a bit more about that process and what the current enrollment is at Hatherley and Cushing?
Sure, the round numbers, the current enrollment at Hatherley is about two hundred and fifty students and at Cushing, it's a little bit over three hundred. So we're at about five hundred and fifty students between the two schools. When, when they did the enrollment study, they look at. Both the proposed Hatherley Cushing School combined, the Wampe Tuck and the Jenkins. And there was a determination that there were a lot of spaces that were not used for for classrooms. At Jenkins that could be utilized for that purpose, so that the enrollment at the new. Cushing Hatherley School would be about three hundred and thirty students. And the difference between the two would be housed at the Jenkins School. Well, we we met with them again and walked through the floor plan with Dr. Long. Who's very familiar with her school, obviously, and talked about the spaces that they perceived as being available for classrooms. And why they weren't specifically. Self-contained special ed programs that are at the Jenkins that they weren't aware of. That that they thought could be classrooms for traditional academic programs that can't be. There's some other common spaces that are used for office space or specialists like the health. Health teacher teaches all her classes in one specific space, so that's not available. As a as a specific grade classroom, which was contrary to what they perceived originally. So they they looked at that information and came back with a revised number of four hundred and, I think, what did I say, four sixty-three? So that that's how we got to the larger number in in that building. Keeping in mind that, you know, while we know there'll be a gym, those are not, you know, it might be an auditorium. Those are all decisions to be made. They're not part of the teaching space that that goes into the calculation for the enrollment figure.
Okay, thank you.
And just as a follow-up to that, Dr. Dutch, I mean, if there's some wild swing in town. For whatever reason, say, a new development or a number of families move out in the next twelve months, or a number. Families with young children move in in the next twelve months. Is that number hard set now, or is that a number that could fluctuate and we could modify with the MSBA if we need to?
That number is hard set and it will not change, no matter what happens now. Which is, which is why it was so important to make sure that we had it at a at a maximum number that that was practical. And still met all their guidelines. And the flip side, at least they can't, at least they can't make it smaller.
That's true.
I I have a question for Bob. The, you said for, when choosing the OPM, there's a minimum grade. I'm sorry, there's like, there's a grading system? Is there a minimum grade for like that in that scoring system? Like, you know, if you had like two really high scores and you had one that. You know, that there was a big gap between two and three, would you just not pick three? Or, you know, is there?
You, well, first of all, you you determine the criteria and the scale that you're gonna score on, so you so you have some flexibility there. But that said, if if only two of the applicants af- after the scoring process. Meet your standard, then no, you don't have to include all three. You can just go with two. To the MSBA, the challenge becomes if you if you don't come to terms on a negotiation for price. Then then you you may have to go back out. It's the process of of advertising and redoing it. If none of the others meet meet the minimum standard that you have.
Thank you.
Do you know the question? I thank you for that update, Dr. Dutch.
You're welcome.
So next on the agenda is our first opportunity for public comment. If people want to raise their hand, I can call on them. I just need to give you a name and address. When I unmute you. I am going to give one update before I turn it over to the people in the audience, just for the committee, as well as the people in the meeting. I met earlier today with computers, Rich Wong, and then Jeff Pfeiffer and Sam Hayes from CitiTV. So we have all the technology. This is about the second or third time that we've looked at being able to meet in person while also being able to have the. The Zoom and the Facebook Live capability. As I've gone through and watched. The numbers fluctuate in tonight's meeting. We've had somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five non-co-hosts. Part of our meeting. So obviously, having that. Ability to continue to have those people attend our meetings, have people hear our meeting, which I know is a major concern even before the pandemic. And then being able to present and have everyone see the presentations as opposed to, you know, just having to hear it and try to follow along. So we went through and looked at all of that and based on what we saw today, we wouldn't necessarily use the high school library. One thing we're looking at, if if you walk into the library right off the high school, there's a little room to the right. And that looked like it would be better from a a sound perspective, as well as just the spacing, so that not all is spread out across the high school. The high school library, sorry. Our next meeting is April twenty-fifth. April eleventh is town meeting. So our next actual school community meeting will be the April twenty-fifth. So we'll be looking to have that meeting in person while this with the committee, while at the same time having. The Zoom and the the Facebook Live capability with with the audience. And so I'll keep the committee updated on that as we go over the next month. There's still some nuances that we need to work out, but. Just wanted to give that update before I turn it over to public comment, because really, there's no other spot to put that on the agenda tonight. I did want to make sure that came out before. You know, people spoke. So the first person is Laurie Withrow.
Thanks, Mike. Laurie Withrow, sixty-two and Vinyl Road. Good news on being back in person as well as that Zoom capability. Thank you, Mike, for that. I just wanted to comment about the school calendar. I guess I'm a little surprised that we you voted on it tonight without any real. On the first reading, as well as no public comment on it beforehand. I was hoping to have some discussion about perhaps going back before Labor Day. You know, starting June twenty, ending the school year on June twenty-seventh is really late. As well as other towns going back before Labor Day. I just did a quick Google search while I was on this call right now. I see. Marshfield, August thirtieth, Duxbury, August thirty-first, Wellesley, August thirty-first, and over August thirty-first, just a few towns that. Marshfield, August 30th, Duxbury, August 31st, Wellesley, August 31st, and over August 31st, just a few towns that I looked up. And I know it's been, I it's one of those things where I actually even evolved and I changed my mind myself. I know when. When, Mike, I've been through the system once and I still have a fifth grader. And I know when my kids were little and I thought, oh, the longest. Days we can have of summer is great. I was on baseball fields till mid-August and then I wanted those weeks after. And I definitely changed and evolved on that, having been through it. I know it's really difficult in August, the end of August, where the camps have. Ended, so there's no childcare. A lot of the college babysitters have left. There's also no childcare from them. On those last few weeks. Then when my kids got to high school, I realized. In Situate, we have so many high school kids that play fall sports, so you have to be here as well. Because the end of August, the fall sports start, so families can't go on vacation then either. And getting in as many academic days at the beginning of the year, I think, is really critical with spring. Time being time for. ACTs and MCAS and all of that. So as many academic days, just. And in this year, my son has a camp, a special camp that starts the week of June 27th. Where other towns, those kids are able to go and my fifth grader is really struggling with that because he. Doesn't want to miss his last day of school. I actually gave him the option that, you know, well, you could go. Go to this and not miss out. But he's like, I'm not missing my last day of Hathaway before he moves on to middle school. So I just wanted to throw out some opinions on that. I actually would love to see even a survey having. Been done for families as well as the staff. I know, having been through a lot of meetings over the years, that it's contract issues with the teachers. But, I mean, I'd love to hear. I know I've spoken to some teachers that said, hey, I don't want to be in school till June 27th either. I actually just had a conversation. Last week with a few teachers that they wouldn't mind going back and actually having those few orientation days before Labor Day. And then when they go back after Labor Day, going right to academics. So I just wanted to throw it out there that I was hoping to have a little more discussion on that before a vote. And again, just. Kind of surprised that a vote was taken without any public comment on it beforehand. But thank you so much. Thanks.
Thanks, Laurie. And we did say that this could come back again, not necessarily to change the date, but, you know, the second page has to come back and. There was talk about two of the PD days, whether it's going to be the week before Labor Day or sometime after. So this was going to come back for a vote anyways. And I do just want to clarify the, assuming no snow days, the last day of school would be June 20th. With the five days in, it would be included. That would be June 27th. But I just want to clarify that in case. Because that's what the calendar currently says. The next person is Charlotte.
Yes, I'd like to echo the issue with the school calendar. Typically, we've started the. The. The calendar. At the Tuesday after. Labor Day. Now that's changed. Some schools start on. You know, prior to Labor Day. I think it makes sense to start August 31st. Do Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the week before Labor Day, and then. I don't really understand why we're not going on the 6th of September. Because typically, we've always done that. But, you know, if for some reason there is a vote that needs to be taken and we're not going to go on the 6th. I think it makes sense to go two weeks, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then start full weeks after that. I think it's in the best interest of the students to kind of ease them back in and, you know, start school. Three days, two weeks, and then start your five-day weeks. I have, in addition to that. The comment I wanted to make was. That I've been dealing with civil rights violations. At Situate Public Schools for years, starting in 2008. 2015, I started an informal complaint process with Desi. And it was just an egregious incident. That one of my children suffered at Situate Public Schools. With that complaint, there was. There was no improvement with the informal complaint. I started a formal complaint procedure. There was retaliation with that. And there was also no acceptable resolution. My children and I have suffered here. And. I'm disgusted with the school district. The administration, right now, I have a child at Situate High School. And very unfortunately, two children who have graduated from Situate High School. The administration is abysmal. And and I don't really want to comment any further than that.
I'm gonna, just to your way, I mean, typically, this isn't something that. I'm up to the school committee before, so I don't want to, I mean, you're free to make your comment, but I just. You know, obviously. You know, if that's going through its normal course, I don't want to. Impact that if it's still ongoing with the district, so. You know, you can finish your comment if you want, but I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was clear.
Okay, Mike, I I emailed you in November, December. I think it was November. And there's been no response, so. I'm, I'm completely unhappy. My children have been harmed and. I'm. I'm going with the procedure of making complaints. So I'm. You actually had some speakers here today that have severely discriminated against me and my children. One of my children was put through the Rosa Parks incident, and I really just want to end with that.
Okay. Thank you for your comment, and we'll we'll definitely take your. Your comments under advisement.
Mike, do we have her name and address?
I just found the email she sent me, so I have it. I can send it to Junie.
Mike, could you just go over why we don't have school on that Tuesday? For her?
Yeah, I just had, yeah, so the reason that typically anytime there's an election, a state or federal election. The school district takes the day off from school because the high school is used as the polling station. We're not going to have one school closed. All of the others are open. And we've agreed with the town in the past that anytime there's an election like that, it would. We would have school closed, that there's no. Issues between people coming to the schools and voting and having school and parking spaces and things like that. So that's why this year, September 6th, which is the Tuesday, would be no, no school as well as. November 8th, which is another election day. So those are the two days that. You know, we are taking off in agreement with the town in order to have those elections occur. Seeing no other hands raised, we'll move forward in the agenda. Next is a subcommittee update from Superintendent Burkhead on the South Shore Educational Collaborative.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Just a brief meeting update. We spoke at the. Last meeting about the 22 budget, the current budget. The collaborative is in better financial situation. Earlier in the year, they were in a little bit of trouble because of enrollment. That has picked up and they look like they'd finished the year on solid ground. The FY23 budget was also brought up. This is the first draft for the collaborative to look at and the. Future conversation on that will be on the April 8th board meeting. They also shared their 22, 23 school calendar to the board and. Informed us that their COVID protocols would be lifted effective March 7th. And it's been done. And finally, that they declared their 2008 Ford F-150 pickup as surplus equipment. That's all for tonight.
There any questions with Superintendent Burkhead on that a bit? Moving on, we do have the approval minutes. In our backup, we have the minutes from March 14th, 2022. As if there are no questions on. Or changes on those minutes, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve them.
Can you move?
Second.
Thank you. Long, yes, Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Dr. Burkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Blumblum?
Yes.
And Ms. Friendly?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, we have an update from Dr. Dutch. There are four warrants to be read into the minutes.
Yes, there are four warrants. The first one is S220303. Total amount of $245,644.2. Of which $13,358.90 was out of our revolving accounts for school lunch. Out of the local funds, $147,895.31 for private school tuitions. $37,671.60 for collaborative, to the South Shore Collaborative. And then we had athletic contracted services in the amount of $6,177.50. For gym rental for gymnastics and ski fees for the ski team. The next warrant is S220310. Total amount was $366,789.61. From our special ed grant, we had $132,765.36. To the North River Collaborative and the South Shore Educational Collaborative. From our local funds, $118,404.53 to private school tuition. $34,305.30 to the collaborative. Our gas utilities, $28,160.18. Central administration supply, we had $9,703.66 for our Medicaid payment. So those are the only large items for that particular warrant. Warrant S220317. Total amount of $80,827.80. Large sums, $21,549. For school lunch. $38,040 for architect for the locker room renovation, which is out of capital. $12,500 also for engineering for the portico at Wampe Tuck, also being paid out of capital. And local funds in the amount of $172,432.17. We had four large items, private school tuition, $30,149.88. 13 for private school tuition, $13,554.50 for the collaborative. Our electric utilities, $52,935.48. And gas utilities, $48,254.44. And the last warrant is S220324. Total amount of $157,736.24. We had two large items. One was private school tuition, $112,479.41. And then central administration supplies, $8,835.23 for copier costs. Those are all the warrants. Happy to answer any questions or hearing comments that you may have.
I took one question to you, Dr. Dutch. So obviously, the rising gas prices are impacting everybody. Are we in a locked price for the gas? Are we going to face?
We we are, we are in a locked price for gas. Yes, we are. It's it's a new rate starting July 1st, which is higher than it is currently. And it's locked, it's locked in for three years.
Okay, so we wouldn't be impacted by.
No, these, these rates that you're seeing now are just increased usage from what we've had in the past. This is the height of the winter, these bills and. You know, last year, we were on a partial schedule, so your number is a little bit different right now.
Okay, thank you for providing that. And I know it's like 28,000 to 48,000 from one warrant to the next. That's why I wanted to make sure we're not. You know, going to start seeing gigantic gas prices.
Right, and and, you know, you've got to look at the length of the months and the number of days included in that, in those bills. They vary in that respect as well.
Hopefully, today was the last day of snow for the the season, but.
Let's hope, although tomorrow's supposed to be cold.
Any other questions for Dr. Dutch? I thank you for reading those into the minutes tonight.
Thank you.
There's no correspondence. Is there any other business that members of the committee wanted to bring up tonight? If not, our next meeting is April 11th. And it's actually town meeting. And then our next actual school committee meeting is April 25th. So this time, we are going to enter executive session. We will not be returning to public sessions, so this ends the the public. Aspect of the meeting. So this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session for the reasons that's.
I'll make a motion, Mike, to enter an executive, enter into executive session for reason number two. Because the open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and will not return to open session.
Second.
Thank you. I thought there were a roll call vote. Long, yes, Dr. Burkowski?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Ms. Brindelini?
Yes.
And Ms. Blumblum?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a great rest of your night.